The four guys sitting out there. Are they for that public hearing?
Yup.
Who I ran into yesterday. Oh, two days ago.
Who?
Oh, I know who that is.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna call the meeting to order of January 5th, 2015. Let's see, the quick please call the roll.
Mayor Ford.
Here.
Mayor Protem Bullock.
Here.
Councilman Amador.
Present.
Councilman Teeter.
Here.
Councilwoman Carson.
Present.
Councilman Benson.
Here.
Councilman McAldowney.
Here.
Councilwoman Elliott.
Present.
Councilman Douglas.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, on my outline it doesn't show up, but we do have an executive session this evening. I'm hoping for a motion to go into executive session. Okay. Let me get the... Mr. Bullock.
Move to go into executive session for CRS 246-4024E for the purpose of instructing negotiators regarding the new recreation center and CRS 246-4024E for the purpose of instructing negotiators regarding DIA issues.
Okay. Mr. Benson.
Second.
I have a motion and second to go into executive session for the reasons stated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Our intent is to be back in this room at 7 o'clock. So we'll take one hour. If we don't finish our business then we'll follow it up at the end of the meeting to reconvene the executive session, but we should have enough time. And then we will get back to the meeting at hand. So we are in executive session.
Good evening. I'm going to call the regular council meeting back to order. We're out of executive session. And I'm going to, before we move into standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, what I'd like to do is talk a little bit about our police department. With everything that's going on in the world today and in our country, there's some things that are very frustrating. I want to make sure that everybody knows that I feel that we have a very good police department. And I want the cops to know that they have the respect of myself and I'm assuming of this entire council. And I want them to be safe and productive over the next year, keeping our community safe. I think that's important to say, especially after the loss of Jefferson County Deputy Sheriff. Over the last couple of days, sheriff's deputy was hit and killed while helping somebody on the side of the road. So we stand for a moment of silence. Please keep our police department and the family of the officer that was killed in Jefferson County in your prayers, and then we'll go into the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'll join me with a moment of silence.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I'd like to ask the staff to go around and allow the audience to introduce themselves.
Penny Thomas.
Danny Thomas.
Carol Taylor Boyd with Quality Community Foundation.
Danielle Yearsley.
Scott Hergenreiter with the Better Denver, or sorry, the C-2K Infrastructure Program.
John Howard, Information Technology.
Kathy Blakeney, Director HR.
Troy Smith, Police Department.
Chris Kramer, Community Development.
Carolyn Keith, Parks and Recreation.
I'm Tony Fiori.
Ryan McBrien, Nerds Design.
John Lawlerk, Harris Coco Smith.
Mike Fiori, Fiori and Sons.
Deborah Bullock, Commerce City Historical Society.
And I'm Michael Pape, Columbia, South Carolina with the Electric Guard Dog.
Again, welcome and thank you for being here tonight. I'm going to start off with a proclamation. Proclamation for National Mentoring Month. And I'm open for a motion? Mr. McAdonie.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the proclamation honoring National Mentoring Month.
Okay. Mr. Bullock.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Mr. Gallagher, you want to read that proclamation?
Title reads, Office of the Mayor, Commerce City, Colorado, proclamation. Whereas mentors support our next generation to shape their ambitions, set a positive course, and achieve their boundless potential by providing a consistent adult friend and role model. And whereas, an average of 22% of ninth graders in our community report they do not have a caring and trusted adult outside of their home and school. Studies show these students are almost twice as likely to drink alcohol, 87% more likely to use marijuana, 71% more likely to be truant, and four times as likely to belong to a gang. And whereas collaborative partnerships between business, schools, and other youth service organizations and mentoring programs are an effective way to support children and youth within the community. As mentoring is a proven cost-effective investment for every $1 invested in mentoring, there is a $3 return to society. And whereas mentored children and youth exhibit improved self-esteem, better relationships, and feel greater connectedness to their community and schools. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, on behalf of city council, proclaim January as National Mentoring Month. We hereby commit to supporting more children and youth and people to have access to quality mentors and caring adults in our community. City of Commerce City, Colorado, Sean Ford, Mayor.
Thank you, Bob. I have a motion, a second. The proclamation's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carrying. If everybody will join me down in front, we can give the chief the proclamation, which I don't have. So we'll go down and congratulate him anyway and make sure he gets the proclamation at a later date. But you will get it, chief. Next item on the agenda is the citizen communication. When I call your name, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You'll be given three minutes to address the council. Looks like, I don't know if it's Michael or Michelle. Michael, come on up. Let's get that.
Actually, Mayor, I believe this gentleman is here for one of the public hearings.
Okay.
The Land Development Code amendments.
Yeah, then you'll have an opportunity during the public hearing. This is for items not on the agenda. Thank you. So you'll get your shot. Trust me. We won't let you leave until you get your shot. All right, Deborah Bullock.
Mr. Mayor, I believe Ms. Bullock is here for the Historic Preservation Plan. Is that right?
Is this, Deborah, is this for the Historical Preservation Plan? Then we need to wait, you need to wait until that comes up on the agenda. And you'll also get your shot. All right. We're going to go for broke here. I've got one more. Carol Taylor Boyd. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Carol Taylor Boyd. Okay. I'm Carol Taylor Boyd. My address is 15101 East 112th Avenue, number 29C, Commerce City, 80022. And I'm with the Quality Community Foundation. I'm also on the chair for the, I'm also chairing the Quality Community Foundation Golf Tournament Committee this year. And I'm coming for you today just to give you an update on the progress and to thank you first of all for your support, not only for the golf tournament, but for the wine tasting in October. And to, you know, ask you for your continued support for this project. Our mailing went out last month, applications and letters. We now, we have set our goals. And first one being to sell out the golf tournament. We need 144 golfers. We are, we are, our goal is to raise $17,500. We changed our sponsorships a little bit, inspired by building a Quality Community Foundation, or Quality Community for a Lifetime. We now call our highest sponsorship Platinum Green Scholarship Partner. And the second highest, the Lead Scholarship Partner, these are the highest standards in construction. And we would like to have five Platinum Green Scholarship Partners for 2,500, eight Lead Scholarship Partners for 1,400. We knew this year, as we're also having the Beverage Cart sponsor two of those, and those are $1,000. Our strengthening community partner is $750. We have a 2015 Ford Mustang, a 2015 Ford F-150, and a 2015 Harley Road Glide for our Hole-in-One prizes. And I believe that's everything. And that's all. Thank you.
Well, since you're up here and this council is what created the Quality Community Foundation, and I think it's important to let the people in the audience and the viewers at home know that the Quality Community Foundation is where the funds come from to help these nonprofits in our community survive so that they can give back to the people within the community. Food banks, those type of, those type of things that the foundation goes out and makes sure that they're viable and that they give back to our community. So by participating in this golf tournament, you would be essentially helping to provide services for people within the community. Would you agree?
Actually, that's one part of it. The grants that we'll be reviewing starting this month, and then we'll make our recommendations to you, I think the end of next month or beginning of March.
Right.
But this is for the scholarship, I'm sorry, I'm nervous.
Yeah, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure that everybody got to know what the purpose is for and that it was going back into the community in one form or another.
This is for the academic scholarship program. The city gives the money to us for the grants, you know, we read them and make the determination on amounts. The scholarship, we, the Quality Community Foundation members, board members, we raise this money through, primarily through the golf tournament. And what we have given since 2006 has been at least one $4,000 scholarship for a student or a non-traditional student that wants to pursue higher education through a Colorado College, University, or Vocational School. And we gave two scholarships last May, and there's two right now that'll finish, that have finished up this year. The last of their scholarship money has been, you know, awarded. The last of their scholarship money has been, you know, awarded. So, that's what this is for, is to grow our scholarship program again.
Well, and we want everybody at home and in the audience to know that it goes to a good cause.
It does.
Please sign up for a foursome or be one of those cart sponsors or, what'd you call the first one? The green?
The, we have Platinum Green Scholarship Partner. I mean, there's so much, we have so much building going on in Commerce City right now. We thought we'd just ride the coattails of it, and that's what we call our top sponsor.
Good. Good. Well, when you sit back down and talk to those guys behind you, make sure they get a flyer.
Certainly will.
All right. Yeah, I don't want you to leave without getting some kind of promotion.
True. And one more thing, if I have time, we have a fabulous committee, and Rick is part of it, and we're very excited. Rita Reba has agreed to be on it too. So, we've got a lot of work been done and is going to get done, and so, thank you so much.
Well, if Rick's a part of it, make sure the fire department gets in there with at least one foursome. Okay?
Of course.
I'm working for you here.
I know, I thank you.
Thanks for coming in tonight.
All right, thank you.
Good luck.
Sean, I got my button.
Oh, you got your button lit, Rick?
Yes.
Go ahead.
First of all, Carol, thank you. You got a little bit of my thunder there. I was also going to congratulate the committee for the hard work so far. We put a lot of time and effort into this golf tournament, and it is actually, the date is going to be the first Friday after Memorial Day weekend. So, that's very important. It's gonna be nice weather out there, and we do have a couple of beer sponsors also, so, there are beer holes out there too. So, come on out and enjoy this golf tournament, it's gonna be fun. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we're through the citizen communication. We're gonna move on in the agenda to the approval of the minutes. We start out with August 18, 2014. I am open for a motion to allow Councilman Douglas to abstain from voting on these minutes because he had an excused absence. Mr. Bullock?
Move to allow Mr. Douglas to be excused from voting?
Thank you. Mr. Amador?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to allow for the abstention. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, I'm open for a motion to approve the August 18, 2014 minutes. Mr. McAdonie.
So, move.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to take care of the minutes of August 18, 2014. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That motion is carried. Now, we'll move into September 29, 2014. I'm open for a motion to approve those minutes. Mr. Douglas?
So, move.
Mr. McAdonie?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the September 29, 2014 minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That motion is carried. And we have December 15, 2014. I'm open for a motion to approve those minutes. Mr. Bullock?
So, move.
Mr. McAdonie?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the December 15, 2014 minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That motion is carried. Now, we'll move into the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are two items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on this council wish to remove either of them? Saying not, I am open for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Amador?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the attorney please read the title of the consent agenda?
Title of ordinance 2037 reads as follows, An Ordinance Adopting the City of Commerce City Public Art Funding Program. Title of ordinance 2040, An Ordinance Amending the 2015 Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by Appropriating a Portion of the Unencumbered Fund Balance of the General Fund in the Amount of $80,000 for the Annual Appropriation to the Boys and Girls Clubs of Metro Denver, Inc., and the Expenditure thereof. That's the consent agenda. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. The consent agenda has been read. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show that the consent agenda has been approved unanimously by the council this evening. Moves us into the next item on the agenda, the public hearings. We have ordinance Z 914-15. And before I open the public hearing, I just want to disclose that I have had in the past, prior to me becoming mayor, a relationship with Mike Fiori and Fiori &amp; Sons as a private contractor, and haven't done anything with them for a long time, don't feel that I have a conflict. I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention so that nobody can come back and go, what's going on here? So, I have nothing to do with this project at all, and haven't had anything really to do with any of their work for the past three or four years. So, with that said, I'm going to open the public hearing unless there's someone with a concern that I can address. Saying none, I'm opening the public hearing. I'm gonna invite the staff forward to make their presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Happy New Year. Tonight, you'll be hearing case Z 914-15. This is for the property located at 9109 Monaco Street. The applicant is Fiori &amp; Sons Incorporated, and the request before you tonight is a zone change from agricultural to the I-2 Zone District. Currently, the property is zoned agriculturally. There are a number of different users around the subject property. To the north, there are properties being used for agricultural purposes. To the west is the South Platte River and the River Basin. To the east is Warner Enterprises and I-76, and to the south currently is vacant. The comprehensive plan does call this area out for industrial distribution, as well as to the west side of the property, there is a large nine-acre wetland, so there was kind of an open space designation given on the comprehensive plan and future land use map. Just taking a look at the aerials, and you can see the property, we will talk a little bit about its history. The entire site is approximately 31 acres in size. However, from Monaco Street, only five acre, approximately five acres is visible. There is a rather large, a rather significant change in elevation. It slopes downward as you, as you leave kind of that top plateau, and then, once it kind of, the topography changes, it becomes another plateau kind of in the lower section of the property to the west. Here's just another photo. Again, what you're seeing is only really that top five acres. There is quite a bit more down below it. Previous cases, the subject property has had a number of different cases. One was a use by permit for gravel mining in '95 and '96. Later, there was a landfill case and a use by permit for inert material landfill. And then, finally, there was a minor modification to reduce the floor area ratio for the development by the applicant. Other concurrent cases with the zoning request before you tonight is a development plan to construct office and warehouses, oh, sorry, and office and warehouse space, as well as a consolidation plat to bring together a number of different tracks and to create one lot and one block. As I mentioned, the request is tonight to change from the Agricultural Zone District to the I-2 Zone District. The applicant is proposing development of the site along with this zone change request. The request is for a office warehouse over 21,000 square feet, to have landscape improvements along Monaco Street, to have outdoor storage on the lower portion of the site on an approved surface, as well as to accommodate employee and customer parking. We'll take a look, as you can see, this is kind of the overall site. You can see up at the, along the right-of-way and kind of the grade of the right-of-way in Monaco Street, there is the building as well as employee parking and the landscaping with, as the slight, the site slopes down, that's where any of the outdoor storage would be allowed. You see a little bit closer, taking a look at the landscape plan, this is again right along the Monaco frontage. Some of the elevations using brick as well as kind of a metal siding, having a few bay doors to allow for, for some repair. This is the proposed plat. Again, there's a number of different tracks. This is the older part of the city as far as subdivisions go, and they are working to consolidate that into one lot and one block. The development review team's analysis, as well as the planning commission, looked at the zone change based upon the criteria within the Land Development Code. They did see that the proposed development is consistent with the comprehensive plan, calling it out for industrial distribution. Next, the proposed zone district is compatible with the industrial nature of the area. We do have large industrial uses like Warner Enterprise just across the street and the I-76 interchange is nearby. The surrounding area has changed and is currently still changing from agricultural to industrial. And finally, the topography and the history of this site make it suitable for outdoor storage due to the fact that the topography actually slopes down, and none of that outdoor storage would be seen from any of the public right-of-way. As of Wednesday, this is before the public hearing for planning commission, staff received zero requests for any additional information, and we did have one member of the, one citizen come and just make comment at our planning commission hearing. And this does look like the wrong PowerPoint. The case was reviewed against the criteria in the Land Development Code, and on December 3, the planning commission did vote unanimously, five to zero, to forward this request as approval to City Council for the zone change from agricultural to the I-2 Zone District. And with that, staff will take any questions.
Are there any questions from the council for staff? Mr. Benson?
You know, I just noticed one thing. It's probably just a typographical error, but what we've got on our agenda says 9101 Monaco Street, and the slide said 9109.
I apologize.
Just whatever it is, you know.
Yeah, it's 9109.
Okay.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you. This is just on the other side of 88th, on the other side 66, right?
Yes, sir.
So, the backside, there's a portion that isn't unincorporated to Adams County, correct?
Yes, sir. Actually, both the north and the south is unincorporated, as well as to the east.
Okay, so, this portion would be still in Adams County, we're in?
This property is currently within the city.
Is it?
The entire 31 acres.
That's a good question. I was thinking about that, too.
What about the portion on Monaco? Any other land in Commerce City to the south or north of that, on the other side of it?
Not at this time. No, sir. It is within our growth boundary, though.
Cheese, Swiss cheese, huh?
Little bit.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Amador?
I see that there's a residence to the northeast side of the property. Was, were they here for a public comment in planning commission, or did, what was the public comment that you?
The resident that did come for the planning commission hearing is actually, if you look on the screen right, their property is right here. They, the corner of their property touches the corner of this property. They wanted to express concern about trucks and traffic on that road, as well as wanted to talk about weight limits on Monaco. We did reach out to the county after the planning commission to make sure that the weight limit was appropriate, and we've discussed with the applicant that they will not be able to turn left out of their site because there is a weight restriction just to the north of their access.
Very good. Another question, I was looking at the proposed site plan. What are these little lines that are, appear to be parking spaces, but I'm sure they're storage, or can you explain what's going on in there?
Yes, sir. There, there's a few different proposals as far with the development plan. One is for additional parking for the applicant's trucks, as well as the opportunity to utilize leasing out some spaces for other kind of heavy equipment's parking. Each of those, if there is a user, will also have room in the building. So, there's an opportunity, our code does require for any person that wants to have outdoor storage to also occupy part of the principal structure. And so, the development plan identifies three separate office kind of warehouse spaces on the principal structure, and then they would be able to lease those for truck storage within kind of designated parking spaces on the west side of the property.
Very good. Thank you.
Shada Carson?
Can you tell me what the storage would be used for?
Currently, it's, the proposed is for additional trucks for the applicant, as well as potentially leasing out to other contractor that might need extra truck parking. But again, they would, any, any user of the site for outdoor storage would also have that space in the principal building. Additionally, there was some conversation about having some RV and boat parking and storage on the site, and they are offering potentially some covered parking if that is a direction that the applicant decides to go.
And then, the trucks that would be entering and exiting, are they loaded or unloaded, or?
I'll have to defer to the applicant for that. It's my understanding most of them would be unloaded.
Give me one second, I'll call you up, and we'll ask you some questions, so, you're all right for now.
Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Councilman Douglas?
I'm gonna hold my question just for the applicant.
All right. Councilman McAdonie?
Just a question, the packet contains an alternative or, an alternative for A1 Organics. So, the primary plan is to pursue the office space, storage space, et cetera. Would the A1 Organics be a complete substitution for the development as proposed? And where do we, where do we stand? I guess to clarify the action tonight, we're really looking exclusively at the rezoning of this property. We see one likely and one possible alternative
Yes, sir.
...development proposal that would necessitate that rezoning. Is that accurate?
Right. The packet, with, during conversations with the applicant, originally, the design was for a few different users to utilize the outdoor storage space to the west of the property. They had submitted their development plan for the building that was gonna be necessary no matter what direction that they went. During those conversations, there was an opportunity for A1 Organics, which is a large user, that started conversations with the applicant. There, to my knowledge, and again, I'll have the applicant address this, if the, it goes forward, it would not stop the development as proposed. It would just change it from multiple users to one large user, all of which would be, fall under that I-2 Zone District. And that's why we included it within the packet, because we wanted to make sure that it was very clear, it could be used for this, and this is what its original intent was, but it doesn't change what the development proposal is, even though it might be a different user.
That's great. I appreciate the clarification.
Mr. Amador?
Another quick question. And so, if there's only a, I guess it was gonna be a right-in, right-out at this particular location, trucks have to cross, across the left lane to make a left if they can't turn left going out of the site, there, it's only a right-in, right-out, or how's this working? I'm just really trying to figure out if trucks aren't allowed to go the Adams County way. They come in from what we'll call it, by the flea market, if you will, right, kind of that little area. So, then, I don't know how far the stacking would be if trucks were trying to get in there. Is that gonna be an issue?
Not to my knowledge. Currently, Monaco Street does not, according to Adams County, doesn't have a high volume of traffic during the daytime. When I spoke with the transportation person with Adams County, they didn't seem to think that this would be an issue. They would be turning left coming north to the site, and then turning back south to either go to I-76 Exchange or to hit the Frontage Road right there. The, from the Frontage Road all the way to this property is a little bit over 800 feet, and there is some additional kind of dirt shoulder that exists already there that I believe has been used for a number of purposes. I saw a few semis parked out there the other day. And I, I'm not sure exactly the plans as far as widening that street within the county. I do know that with our comprehensive plan designation, an industrial cross-section would be warranted at a future date when, when we were in control of that road.
Thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I had a question. Monaco, does that go up to 96th? Is there an access point?
There is. It's, I believe it is a T.
A T.
And you would, you would only be able to turn right onto 96th.
Only turn right on 96th? There's no exit, there's, you can't go west on 96th and turn left onto Monica?
Right. You, you can, Monica goes north, it, once it hits 96th Avenue, you can turn right, and you can keep going north. you can keep going north, but I don't believe that you can go west on 96 there because you would hit the south plat.
Okay, so there's a T at 96 in Monaco.
Yes, sir.
So they could use that road to turn left on Monaco and come down, right, right in, right out, and they just turn right out onto 88, correct?
Most likely, they would be using the frontage road to the south to, to access the property, just because the, the weight restriction currently is north of their property on Monaco. So we, the applicant is gonna have signs on, for their development that make sure that trucks aren't turning left, and the applicant's also indicated they wanna be a good neighbor and try to keep trucks off of that northern part of Monaco, just because currently there is a weight, weight restriction in place.
A weight restriction on Monaco and 96?
On Monaco, north of their property, north of their access.
Okay. So I'm just, I'm at the map right now, I'm just trying to visualize where.
Yeah. If this is, this map right here, you can see, here's the hotel, this is Warner Enterprise, the frontage road is here, if you go to the south, you would hit 88 and the bridge that crosses over I-76. The access for this site will be to the southern part of this, right here along Monaco. And the weight restriction is actually to the north of this. And so according to Adams County, their decision to, to put that weight restriction on was because these properties are still being used for agricultural purposes, and at a later date, obviously, this is within our growth boundary, and so since it is called out for industrial, it would be an industrial cross-section, getting rid of any kind of weight restriction. But at this time, due to that weight restriction, the applicant would access the site from the south and also leave to the south. If they needed to go north, they would be using this frontage road or jump onto I-76.
So when this is, if this is approved, it's, it's not really gonna be a right-in, right-out then?
Right, it's gonna be a, a left as you're going north and then a right to go south.
Okay. All right, we need to specify that. Thank you.
All right. You? Mr. Bullock?
Is this site the old man's fish hatchery?
The property is a little bit to the north of this site.
Okay, so the man's fish hatchery is-
I believe-
Right-
...in here.
Okay, it's, yeah, it's, we can't see it on this map, but it's about two blocks up from it. Okay, thank you. I was trying to get a visual where exactly this is.
Right.
And there used to be a lot of fish hatcheries right down through there, matter of fact, there are still some, but I couldn't figure out where this property was.
There's a fish hatchery right here on Mantell's property, used to be, it's not active anymore, which is to the, to the south of the property.
The man's?
Mantell.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further questions from the council, I'd ask the applicant to come forward, make any additional comments, maybe answer some of the questions that you've heard posed by the council here this evening. State your name and address for the record.
Are we on? Yes, we are. Okay. I'm Tony Fiori, I'm one of the sons at Fiori &amp; Sons. We, we acquired this property that was previously owned by Mr. Broda. He had created a gravel pit here, so obviously this area was accustomed to some degree of truck traffic, mostly turning to the south. And then he refilled the property to its current elevation using inert fill, which was then brought in via truck traffic, of course. So what we're proposing here should be not much different than the amount of truck traffic that this area had been accustomed to over the last 20 years. We acquired the property from Mr. Broda when he decided he just didn't need it anymore. Our original intent of this property was to use it as overflow parking for our own trucks. We have since acquired a different plat of land, and since then, we have really just been seeking the highest and best use of this property with the cooperation and working with your staff. The, the staff suggested initially that in order for us to move forward with this project, we would need to exceed your standards for landscaping and architectural requirements on the building, which we did without hesitation. The design shows ample trees, bushes, shrubs up front. We've screened the entire frontage out with a proposed screened fence. The front of the building has greater than the required amount of masonry. We have a covered entrance with a canopy, we have a patio to the north. We've really made an effort to show a great deal of pride and quality in the creation of this development. One of the goals there, of course, was to create a nice frontage for the community and be a good neighbor. And then we painted out, or we drew out the locations of where we would propose to park trucks in the backlot. The, there were several questions here tonight about what kind of tenants we would have on the site, and again, in working with your staff, it was suggested that we have no more than three tenants in the entire site, which we agreed to. We do not currently have any one tenant signed up for this, so I, I can't give you a commitment as to exactly how this land is gonna be used, but we can promise you that no more than three different tenants would be occupying this site and the building concurrently. The building would have three lockable office compartments for each of those tenants to, to coexist together and work together in the building. So that's, I just wanted to give you my explanation of how this all came together, and I'll, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Is there questions from the council for the applicant? Mr. Douglas?
Thank you for being here tonight. Is this just gonna be for truck storage, or are you looking at doing organic recycling and storage of the byproduct?
A1 Organics is one of the potential leasers who is interested in occupying this site. We have nothing signed with them. If they were to occupy it, they would take, they would want to take up a great deal of land, 15 to 19 acres. So they would be a large primary tenant in the opens, the lower open space of the land. They would have a relatively small office space up front, so that would only leave room for one more tenant, I assume primarily a trucking company who would take up the remaining four to five acres.
So with that one company being on the site, would it be the, the dumpage of compost, mulch, potting soil, what have you? And then just as a temporary storage, and then that stuff is scooped up and taken off the site? There's not gonna be any kind of digging and then burial of this product, correct?
Your description is correct. If, if any compostable product is dumped on this site, it would be immediately transferred to another site further north. They own several properties up in the Weld County area, and this would be just a transfer station for that. Their primary goal, as I understand it, is to store dry wood-type materials that would be then grinded into a planting bed material and colorized for resale as planting bed material. That material is not intended to compost or rot or create any kind of an odor on-site, and they would maintain it as such.
And on the site, there would be no processing of the wood to convert over to that product, correct?
It is my understanding that they would propose some grinding and colorization of the wood on-site if they were to occupy this site, yes.
Now, is that part of the proposal?
If A1 was, were to be one of the users on the site, that does fall within the I-2 Zone District, and so it was part of the review that our staff did and part of the reason why we put both of the proposals within your packet.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilman Carson?
I think Mr. Douglas cleared up a few questions, but they would be, if, if A1 was there, from what I understand, they would receive grass clippings, tree trimmings, and that would be from the general public, is, is what I was reading in this, maybe I need to go back and reread it.
I, I'm not entirely certain of the answer to that, but what I have been assured of by A1 is that if they were to receive any compostable materials, it would be merely for 24 hours of storage and transfer to their sites to the north.
Okay. And then I have the question of trucks that would be stored there, would they be loaded or empty trucks?
These would be trucks that are at the end of their workday, they would be empty, they're there to park overnight, and many of them would stay there for a longer period of time, you know, trailers that are not in use and such. But the ones that are ready to work would come in empty at night and leave empty in the morning.
But, but you would not allow semis to bring loaded trailers in and, and leave them stored there for any time?
Correct. Once the initial construction is complete, I can't foresee any reason why a loaded truck would need to enter this site.
And then, what is heavy equipment? I mean, I, I know what my version of heavy equipment is, but when you say that if you would store heavy equipment, what is that?
Again, we have no commitment from any certain user, but we ourselves are in the business of earthmoving, which involves caterpillar equipment, yellow machinery that moves dirt. And when we say heavy equipment, that's the kind of equipment we're envisioning.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant by the council before we move on? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite anyone in the public who would like to come forward and speak on this matter. Seeing none, when I close the public hearing, does the council have any discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion. Mr. McAdonny?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to accept the facts and recommendations, findings or recommendations of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Second.
Our motion is second to approve the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission concerning Ordinance Z-914-15. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm gonna ask for a motion on the ordinance. Mr. McAdonny?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve Ordinance Z-914-15.
Thank you. Mr. Amador?
Second.
Our motion is second for the introduction of the ordinance Z-914-15. Will the City Attorney please read the title?
Title of ordinance Z-914-15 reads as follows, "An ordinance rezoned from AG to I-2 Zone District. The property described in Exhibit A attached hereto made a part here of located at," and that address will be corrected before second reading, "should be at 9109 Monaco Street, Commerce City, Colorado, and amending the zoning map for the City of Commerce City, Colorado to reflect said rezoning."
Thank you. I have a motion is second. Title's been read, I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, the City Council voted unanimously to introduce ordinance Z-914-15. Thank you for coming in this evening. Move on to our next public hearing, and that is Z-867-07-09-15. I'm gonna open the public hearing, I'm gonna invite the staff forward to make the presentation.
As you read the title- As you read the title, the next case before you is Z-867-07-09-15. This, the allocation is for the Derby Downtown District, and the applicant is the City of Commerce City, and this request tonight before you is to amend, Amendment Number Two for the Plan Unit Development Zone document for the Derby Downtown District. The Derby PUD is located along East 72nd Avenue and Highway Two with rough borders of Magnolia, 74th Avenue. This area is called out for mixed-use residential medium as well as an activity center along Highway Two. To the east of the Derby Downtown District, we do have a number of residences on the west, it's bordered by Highway Two as well as the railroad, with a number of residences across the railroad and some commercial development along East 72nd Avenue. As you can see, the Derby Downtown area as well as the Derby Diamond at Monaco and East 72nd Place. Previous cases, in 2007, the sub-area master plan was approved by City Council for the Derby Downtown District, and it was zoned PUD or Plan Unit Development, and the Derby Design Guidelines were adopted in 2007 as well, after the sub-area plan was, was adopted. In 2009, the PUD was amended to make a few small amendments, as well as to allow for automobile repair for one specific property as a conditional use permit. And finally, in 2009, the urban renewal area was created for the Derby Downtown District. The request before you tonight for the, to, is to amend the PUD Zone document, there are a number of, of small things to update language, to reflect current conditions, to remove the Derby Review Board authority from the actual zone document and to place that into the municipal code, and to add bulk standards to be consistent with other PUD Zone documents, and then finally to include new uses within the land use table and to clarify some of that language. I would like to note that the amendments in Amendment Two for the Derby Downtown District are not going to restrict any property rights for those properties that are already within its boundaries and zone PUD, and also that the amendments do not impact the design guidelines or the sub-area plan, the goals and the visions that are, are within those. Some of the proposed amendments, first is the updated language, that is title changes to Derby Downtown District in Amendment Two, also to remove the notes that refer to high-low marketplace. This is just to make sure that our document is be, able to be used as time goes on, no matter who those users are within the Derby Downtown District. The next is to remove a section of, from the PUD Zone document that discusses the Derby Review Board and its authority. Many of our boards and commissions are, the authority and powers as well as the, the structure of those boards are already within our municipal code, and so we wanna be consistent and move that, the powers and the authority, as well as the structure of that review board into the municipal code. And you see tonight, we also do have Ordinance 2043, that is the resolution moving that within the municipal code.
So that's already covered in the municipal code?
It is, it's something that, it's a, it's a motion tonight. The Ordinance 2043 is, is a motion tonight. It's as a result of the Amendment Two to the Derby PUD Zone document. The next is the bulk standards. Again, this is consistent with other formats that we use within our PUD Zone documents, is to have those, those setbacks and heights within the zone document itself, so that developers and users of those zone documents don't have to go looking at different places. The, excuse me, the bulk standards that are proposed before you tonight are taken from what was already within the zone document, as well as what is within the sub-area plan and the Derby Design Guidelines, and put into basically a table form, so it's very customer-friendly. Last is the land use table, some of which is to clarify the language, some of the terms that are used within the Derby PUD Zone document are similar to terms that are used within our Land Development Code that we have definitions for. We wanna make sure that that language is consistent, so that if users are looking for a definition of what something might mean, that it is easy to find within something that the ci, that the city already has. As I mentioned, the first amendment to the Derby PUD was a few small things, but it also allowed for one specific property to have automobile repair, service and sales, and with a conditional use permit. That property was 7360 Highway Two. Tonight, you can see the property that is just to the south of that property, some might call it Bones Garage. What was, the, the property owner did approach staff and wanted to make sure that their property also was allowed to have automobile sales, service and repair with a conditional use permit, which is the precedent that was set in that 2009 First Amendment. Next is to add new uses that are consistent with other commercial districts, things like catering services, microbreweries, brew pubs. At this time, if there, if there was a user that wanted to- At this time, if there was a user that wanted to do restaurants or a brew pub, it would not be allowed within the Derby Downtown District. And then finally is to remove a 500-foot separation requirement between schools and establishments with the following license, liquor license. One is a brew pub, next is beer and wine, hotel and restaurant, or an art gallery liquor license. Currently, there is a restriction that any, there's a school within the Derby District that's within 500 feet. Our regulation is that if there is any of those establishments within that 500 feet, they cannot operate, and so along with this amendment, it would remove that 500 foot only for those liquor license. So this does not include a tavern license. A tavern would still have to locate outside of that 500 foot of the existing school. And so it's just for the brew pub, beer and wine, hotel and restaurant, and art gallery liquor license. The planning commission analysis, the amendments were consistent with the comprehensive plan and the visions and goals of the sub-area master plan. The proposed amendments are compatible with the commercial downtown character of the Derby District. The proposed amendments do not restrict any of the property rights of those properties that exist within Derby today, and finally that the proposed amendments do update the PUD zone document to reflect the current conditions of that district. Just a little bit about public notification, we did have an open house for Derby in September that highlighted some of the changes to the PUD zone document, as well as a number of other things, and had great conversations with residents and users of the Derby District. Next, we did discuss the Derby amendments with the Derby Review Board in November, and then on Wednesday, we didn't have any additional residents that came out to make any comment at the planning commission December 3rd. Finally, the planning commission did vote also unanimously to forward this request to the, of the W PUD amendment to the city council with the recommendation of approval. And with that, staff will take any questions that the city council might have.
Great, thank you. Does the council have any questions of the staff at this time? Mr. Amador?
So I'm not familiar with the Derby Review Board that was established in 2007. So is the review board still functioning?
Yes, sir. They met, Mr. Councilman Teeter, to your left, is the council representative on that board. I believe we've had five or six different meetings in 2014, and so they have done a lot of, a lot of good work and have been involved in making some changes in the Derby District.
And I guess now that I understand where we are with that, that the board doesn't take exception to relinquishing the authority for reviews and giving that to the city?
There's, there's no relinquishing. The ordinance 2043 will basically move the authority and the power and structuring that was already existing within the W PUD zone document into the municipal code, and they will still have that authority to review. There will not be, it's just, it's the place that we put all of our boards and commissions and how their, their power and structure is given.
Thank you for the clarification.
Judge, absolutely right. It was just a matter of repositioning the Derby Review Board provisions because they weren't with the other boards and commissions, and now they will be in the municipal code.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none. If anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak on this matter? Just come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Deborah Bullock, 6130 Agonho Street, Commerce City, Colorado. The only comment that I have on this is that when you're changing any structures in the Derby area, to keep in mind the historical nature of some of the buildings. We just had a review done by the historic, Colorado Historic, State Historical Fund, and there's really only six buildings left in Derby that are even worthy of historical status. And so if those buildings desired to change their facade, it would, it would not be historical anymore. So if the city at any time wanted to have a historic district in Derby, and you don't have enough buildings, you can't do that. So it's, it's just something that we've learned by having the State Historical Fund do that survey in Derby. And so it's just, it's something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And it's something that as, as time goes, goes along and things happen in Derby, and with what's coming up on our agenda this evening, I know that we're, our intention is to work closely with the historical society as we move forward. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come forward and speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And ask for a motion to approve the findings and recommendations of the planning commission. Mr. Amador?
I think my light was still lit up from last time. It's clear now.
Do you want to make the motion?
Oh, so moved, sorry.
All right. Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the findings and recommendations of the planning commission concerning ordinance Z-867-07-09-15. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion. Mr. Bullock?
I move to approve Z-867-07-09-15.
Thank you. Mr. Macaldoney?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance Z-867-07-09-15. Mr. Attorney, please read the title.
Title of that ordinance reads, "An ordinance approving the Second Amendment to the Derby Downtown District PUD Zone Document."
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. The title's been read. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance Z-867-07-09-15 has been introduced unanimously by council this evening. Move on to the agenda, the ordinance is on first reading. We start with ordinance 2043. Does anyone on council have any questions regarding this ordinance? I've got Mr. Macaldoney, Mr. Bullock, you're waiting for a motion?
Motion.
Okay. Is anyone in the audience here that would like to address the council on this ordinance? Seeing no one. I'm open for a motion, Mr. Macaldoney?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to introduce ordinance 2043 on first reading. Council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the introduction of ordinance 2043. The city attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, "An ordinance revising Section 2-3002 of the Municipal Code for the Derby Review Board in conjunction with the Derby PUD Amendment to Number Two."
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Title's been read, I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2043 has been introduced unanimously by the council this evening. We'll move on to ordinance 2020. Staff, are you prepared to make your presentation? Go right ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. All right. Order number 2020, the topic this evening is the 2014 Minor Amendments to the Land Development Code. The Land Development Code was adopted in early 2009. It's been updated annually. Minor amendments, as well as to ensure the quality, to be consistent, to make sure that we have a fast development process, that we're customer friendly with all of our processes, and we do continually monitor the Land Development Code and the changes that are made. In October 2007, Planning Commission had a study session followed by a city council study session to discuss the, the minor amendments for the 2014 Land Development Code changes. In December 3rd, 2014, the Planning Commission had a meeting and voted on their recommendation for city council, and tonight, the city council is, is hearing for the first, first reading. There are five general categories and 26 proposed amendments related to customer service process, legal clarification, land use table additions, modernization of the code, and finally, community need that's been identified. It is, is important to note that no properties will be rezoned as, as part of this process, as part of these amendments. Taking a look at the customer service process, amendments, changing tracks to lots, design standard review process for PUDs, and outdoor storage permit rather than a use-by permit. I just want to note that both, there are fees associated with those last two processes, and there will be a fee resolution that this council will hear at a later date. Next is legal clarification. This includes flagpole regulations, temporary mobile office structures, recreational vehicles, inoperable vehicle clarification and definition, outdoor storage and chopped-up lots, and finally firearm sales transfers as a home occupation. Land use table amendments include private bus stations, fly ash, natural gas fueling stations, brew pubs, microbreweries, wineries, tasting rooms, and the like, concrete product manufacturing, and clarification for contractor yards and shops. Modernization of the code, amendments include covered patios attached to sheds, covered porches, design criteria, maximum side setback for commercial development, R4 bulk standards, multifamily design standards, and electric fences. And finally, community need amendments include flatwork setbacks, accessory structures for multifamily and townhomes, accessory structures in maximum number, and finally, single-family detached dwelling units in the R3 Zone District. The recommendation on December 3rd, 2014, by the Planning Commission was unanimous to forward this recommendation of approval to city council for ordinance 2020. And with that, staff will take any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions from the council for the staff? Mr. Bullock?
Oh, no, this isn't.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. Question, I know this, I had asked this question in study session, just wanted everyone out there to know, because we do have a facility, if I'm not mistaken, that storage of fly ash, correct? And could you please explain what fly ash is?
Fly ash is just a, a material that is a byproduct that most of the time is stored and used in concrete and asphalt to strengthen those materials, and so that, that material flash is stored within silos. They can be seen, a few of those silos are along Highway 2 at 88th.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Amador?
Just a quick clarification on outdoor storage permits rather than use-by right permits, that $300 is a one-time fee?
Yes, sir. Currently, the outdoor, to have outdoor storage in the I-1S Zone District does require a use-by permit, which is, goes through the Board of Adjustment. The outdoor storage permit would be a one-time fee for that user, for that property, and it would be administrative process.
Very good, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on ordinance 2020? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Michael Pate. I'm with the electric guard dog, and I'm from Columbia, South Carolina. And I'm here to address you on electric security fences. Basically, give you a little explanation of what they are. Basically, we're a security device alarmed. We act as a deterrent in large, open, outdoor storage areas to protect those particular properties. An example would be the Monaco property that you just heard earlier today, where you've got a sloping, sloping lot, everything's hidden back there in the back. The police really can't see what's going on back in a place like that, and we would guard a place like that to keep it secure for the property owner, and allow the police to husband their resources so they wouldn't have to be going out there every other day on break-ins. Basically, the way these things works with 12-volt battery, we just take a 12-volt battery, we amplify the voltage in an energizer or a capacitor up to 7,000 volts. Takes about a second and a half to do that. So once that voltage is, is brought up on that particular energizer, we release it down the line and do a quick perimeter check of that property. So I can do a quick perimeter check on up to 100 acres in less than 3/10,000ths of a second, almost the speed of light. And basically what we're doing is we're measuring that voltage when it comes back to the panel to see if we've got a drop in voltage. If there's a drop in voltage, we know something's going on out there that's really not good, and we're going to basically set off an alarm audibly on the property, and also silently back to me in Columbia, South Carolina. And I'm going to go through a call list before I ever call the police, because I want to verify an alarm. So let's say Councilman Douglas is number one on my list, I'm going to call him at 2:00 in the morning, and tell him there's a break on the perimeter at 220 feet from northeast corner, what would you like to do? Usually, we've got a camera involved with that also. He'd be able to sit at home with his computer, bring up that particular line on, on the camera, see if something's going on out there. Might be a windy night like tonight, there could be a loose piece of metal up on the fence grounding it out. Let's just shut it down, guys, and take care of it in the morning, or I got five guys in hoodies and a flatbed truck robbing me blind, please call the local police department. So that's basically what we do. Now, in, in reading the amendment, I've, I've got a couple of things about the amendment that really aren't going to make it work very well, not only for me, but also for the citizens and businesses in Commerce City. It starts off basically zoning ag zones, two strands of wire. I can appreciate that in agricultural zone, but it doesn't give me a specific right as an installer of electric fences or the businesses we protect basically put up a standard electric fence. It's really not codified in there. Most electric fences are 10 feet tall. They're not eight feet tall, because they're sitting behind another fence that's usually right around eight foot tall in an industrial area. We need to be up and above that eight-foot fence by at least another two feet to keep people from just stepping over and dropping in. So you need another couple of feet up there to keep people from dropping in, going ahead and about their business and robbing the guys blind, and then when they break out, the alarm goes off, business is done. There is a mechanism in the code to do that, but it's a variance process. I just think that's a little cumbersome to have to go to a variance process to put a 10-foot electric fence in when that's what's needed right off the bat. It's expensive and cumbersome for not only me, or anyone else wishing to install an electric fence, but also for my customers who are the constituents of your city here. We install these in Denver, Colorado Springs, all up and down the interstate corridor here. This is nothing new in any of the, any of the cities in this particular, in this particular area. The other thing is the separation between the perimeter fence and the electric fence. Now, there's always a perimeter fence installed first, or a wall, always, so no one can just walk by and touch that fence. So you've got to actually be going through the perimeter fence to touch the electric fence. Right now, there's a six-inch to a three-foot separation, which is good for everything except the gates. Now, in most gates where you have, like the Monaco property, you could have an electric gate with a chain-driven gate, usually I've got a mount on those gates fairly tight. When I say tight, I mean three inches or so, because there's usually a guide on that gate to keep it upright, and we've got to make sure we mount up onto that gate fairly tight to be able to fit inside that guide. If I'm sticking with a six-inch, with a six-inch setback here from the perimeter fence to the electric fence, it's just not going to work. In other words, the gates would be naked, or, or basically the doors would be open. So it's like leaving the door open in your house with all the windows guarded. It really doesn't make much sense. Power source, a 12-volt battery, we're fine with that. On occasion, like a night like tonight, a lot of wind, I live in the South, pine trees fall down on everything, take the power out. We want to make sure those batteries are up and running. Occasionally, they need a trickle charger. In other words, I take a charger, plug it into an outlet, attach that to the battery to make sure I maintain the strength of that battery. Usually, I power the batteries with solar panels, because everything is outdoors, it's never connected to the infrastructure at all, it's a 12-volt system, but if I've got five, six, seven, eight days of sustained cloud cover and bad weather, my battery might die on me, because those solar panels aren't really going to be able to charge it up. So sometimes I'm going to, I'm going to need a trickle charger to keep that battery alive, and so do most other folks. I think I've already covered the height. We really need 10 feet of height, not eight. And like I said, I think it should be incorporated into the, into the ordinance itself as we go to the permitting process, instead of having to go through the permitting process, and then going to get a variance for the height. I just think that's a little cumbersome. Lastly, is a setback for 20 feet from residential and public zones. Now, we've always got a perimeter fence up, and there really shouldn't be any need for that either. that either. I mean, this is a very safe product. It's tested by a nationally recognized testing laboratory, very similar to UL. So, it's a tested product that's safe and reliable and cannot cause injury to anybody. Now, you've already got agricultural fences out there, two strands of wire, operating at 8 times the power of my apparatus, and people bump into it all the time. And a lot of these are in residential agricultural areas, where people actually have homes and children and animals bumping into these particular apparatus. Mine's always behind a perimeter fence or a wall. There's no way anyone can accidentally hit it unless they're really trying hard to do it. So, those are the points I would mention here that probably need to be addressed before this particular portion of this 2020 is run through.
So, what do you suggest for the minimum?
6-inch everywhere but the gates. Height of 10 feet, no setback residential or public zones, and a height of 10 feet.
No setback.
And a trickle charger, basically so we can keep those batteries powered up. And that's about it. If you've got any questions, I'd love to answer them. That's why they send me here.
Alright. Is there any questions on the electric fence piece of the ordinance 2020? My counsel, Mr. McBurney?
Just would like to thank you for taking time to provide your commentary. I think it's been helpful insight to give us some additional facts to consider. I would ask, with council's consensus, that we ask staff to respond or explore those suggestions so that we can consider those during second reading.
Mr. McBurney?
Staff did meet with Mr. Pate prior and is happy to explain why the language is as proposed. Okay, maybe Mr. Draper could...
Well, that'd be great. Any kind of staff on the spot, so I appreciate that.
Before we continue, while we have, is it Mr. Pate?
Yes, sir, Mr. Pate.
Alright, Mr. Pate. Is there any more questions for him before we move on so that I can allow him the opportunity to sit down? Mr. Douglas, do you have a question?
No, for staff.
Alright, for staff.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you, sir, for coming in and testifying this evening.
Thank you.
Yep. Alright, now, comments or questions for staff concerning the electric fence? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, my question is, do we have any other facilities within Commerce City with the same situation, not with what he's asking, but with perimeter electric fence?
Currently, we do not. Our current regulations for electric fences is that it is allowed within the agricultural zone district, and then could be approved in industrial zone districts by the Board of Adjustment. However, they do still have to meet our fence standards as far as setback and the height of those fences. And so, currently, there are not any other than agricultural fences.
Okay. Any kind of past police reports that would support this need that you know of?
Not off the top of my head. It is something that we could absolutely go with the police department and look at a few reports and see if that's supported.
Okay. Because I didn't see like one of the recommendations prior to this, the company that came in to agree on the land and everything had any concerns, so I'm just kinda confused here on that. Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Bullock?
Yes, in Mr. Pate's statement, he said that different communities up and down the front range are adhering to the guidelines that he has suggested, and they aren't having any issues with it. Is there any reason why our electric fence is different than other cities, or had you checked with other cities before our ordinance was placed into effect?
Yes, sir. To address a few of those things, first, we'll talk about the height of the fence. There are several communities, obviously, that are revising their stance on electric fences that previously had prohibited them and now are allowing them as a use by right in a number of different zone districts. A lot of those communities had previous fence standards and certain heights that they already allowed. Some of them did currently, they already allowed a maximum of 10 feet in industrial zone districts, and they allowed 10 feet. One of the reasons that our staff during the research looked at a maximum of 8-foot is because our standard has always been a maximum of 8 feet. And so, some of those other communities that have allowed the 10-foot standard, they previously allowed 10-foot fencing in those areas. And so, the 8-foot was something that we thought, since our community and our land development code has already allowed that maximum of 8-foot, it would be appropriate to keep that 8-foot height. There are, like Mr. Pate said, a number of communities that are doing the 10-foot height. There are also other communities that are only looking at an 8-foot height. And so, I believe that is a preference community to community, and since our maximum height was already 8 feet, that's the proposed maximum height for the electric fence as well.
If, now, knowing that we have a 8-foot height, if you build it on a berm, it still could be 10 feet, because your fence height is only gonna be as high as your fence height from the ground to the top of the fence. So, if you had a 2-foot berm, you could still have a 10-foot height of your fence without, would be within compliance of our fence height, because we're building it from the ground up, correct?
That sounds correct, yes, sir.
And this has nothing to do with staff or nothing, but when somebody says to me, "This is the way we've always done it," that kinda bugs me, because a lot of times, the way we've always done it isn't always the best way. Sometimes, we have to move forward into the future and not always just be the way we always did it. And so, it just brings back a memory of old times here, when somebody used to say, "Well, this is how we've always done it, so that's why we're doing it this way." And I don't know, I think this is just a personal thing that it just bugs me, because that doesn't mean we can't do it a new way.
Absolutely, yes, sir. And we basically went with the precedent that when communities had a 10-foot standard, they accepted a 10-foot electric fence, and when not communities had an 8-foot standard, they accepted an 8-foot electric fence. Some of those changed, and obviously, that is something that we can take a closer look at if council would direct staff that way.
Okay. But any of his recommendations, did staff find them just so out of proportion that is something that staff couldn't look at and revise our ordinance to? I mean, when you were hearing like with the trickle charge because of solar panels, is that something that staff could say, "Well, yeah, you know, he's kinda right. If we did have numerous gray days, he could lose his charge." So, is something that could be put into our ordinance?
Absolutely. If council directs that, it doesn't seem completely out of the question to have a trickle charge for a number of gray days.
Okay. Before I move forward, I got a question I would like to ask Chief Smith to come forward.
Couple things, chief, maybe I can help kinda sort some of this out. First of all, I know at one point in time, we were having some break-ins on some of these industrial zone properties. What do you see the benefits to our community for making amendments to allow the type of changes to our electric fence code that Mr. Pate had recommended? And making it cumbersome for a property that's having problems to be able to utilize this kind of security? And then, thirdly, what are our liabilities for allowing electric fences within certain zone districts within our city from the liability standpoint? If you could touch on those things, I'd appreciate it. And I think I would add, if you know of businesses that would be utilizing this type of service if we allowed it without having to go through the variance process, because it's cumbersome.
None of the communities I've worked in before have had this kind of an ordinance or allowed electrical fences as a security measure. So, my knowledge of these has been listening to the work that community development's done here, and I have had a conversation with another area police chief who is working on a similar review process. So, I preface my comments with not a lot of experience in this arena. I'm not familiar with the 10-foot or 8-foot fence requirement. I think that's an aesthetic question for you all to contemplate from a design standpoint. And I would defer to Mr. Gaylor on the liability issues. I would think that those are associated with the business, not with the community, but I'll leave it to him to provide you that legal advice. From a security standpoint, I would tell you, we do have burglaries at our businesses in this community, they do occur, and we work those burglaries, and we certainly provide, from a crime prevention standpoint, a number of recommendations to businesses that they can do to improve the physical security at their site. And certainly, that includes things like their landscaping, the way they have access to their property, fencing, all of those things. We don't currently offer them this as a service, because we don't have an ordinance there, but it would be another alternative for a business owner to contemplate in terms of securing their property. So, whether or not you should do this or not, I can't provide you any insight on that. I can tell you that we do have crime on occasion that occurs at locations in our industrial areas, and those businesses that do what we would call target hardening from a crime prevention standpoint tend to be less vulnerable for those kind of crimes. In our experience, when we make recommendations to those businesses about regular fencing, about how they landscape their property, many businesses take those on, and we see a reduction in criminal incidents at those locations. On the other hand, we have business owners that will tell us they can't afford those kind of improvements to their property. So, we have a mixed bag, I would tell you, from results in trying to work with business owners to fortify their locations, particularly in the evenings when no one is there to prevent crime from occurring. I'm not sure I was much help to you, but that's my answer.
Not really, but thanks for coming up anyway. Mr. Gaylor, on the liability issue?
Well, first of all, there is a requirement in the proposed ordinance that notice of the electric fence be posted, so that's always a starting point. And the chief is right, the primary responsibility would lie with the property owner if there's gonna be a negligence questions. And then, it becomes a question of whether or not the power is reasonable under the circumstances. If you have a source of power that is so strong that someone touches it, they're going to be killed in the process. Now, that's a little unreasonable. But on the other hand, and I guess I would need some more information about how strong is this electric current going through it? So, that's another issue. It's a matter of reasonableness. I don't think the city itself is going to be placed in a high position of liability if the safeguards that are set out in our ordinance are followed by the city in any inspections and so forth. So, let's assume that our ordinance passes, and the safeguards are in there that are spelled out in the ordinance. I don't think the city would have any liability, but I would like to hear about how much power we're talking about here and how that is determined, because that's a key issue. I mean, if you have power that is so unreasonable under the circumstances, and the city allows that, that's another issue. But I'd like to hear about that. But the notice requirement is a big issue from the city's point of view. If there's been notice posted and somebody still tries to break in and enter through that fence, remember, we're talking about a trespasser here. Now, if you have a person that is licensed to be on the property, a customer or someone like that, and they enter the property, that's gonna be a responsibility of the business owner if that person gets hurt, more so than the city. But with your understanding, I would like to have Mr. Pate here talk a little bit about the power, how strong that is, what's the risk of someone, how seriously they'd be hurt, and so forth.
Well, and with that said, before I call Mr. Pate back up, I wanted to mention, maybe as part of our ordinance, we need to limit the power stream to a certain level so that we can avoid that. You know, I worked around livestock all my life, and he was saying it's a lot less than what a regular cattle fence would be for an electrical output. So, from that perspective, Mr. Pate, will you please come up and answer the city attorney's question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's fairly easy, easily taken care of. I mentioned earlier that we actually test these devices to a specific standard. That's the IEC International Electric Technical Commission Standard 60335-2-76. Please don't remember that. And basically, what that standard does, it sets out the restrictions and the power capacity of these particular devices. So, in other words, you can only hold 5 joules of energy within that capacitor to be released down that line. And the timing of that release is 3/10,000ths of a second. So, although you have high voltage and high amperage, the time that that particular piece of energy is on that line is what makes it safe. And so, we go to a nationally recognized testing laboratory under the auspices of OSHA, have the device tested to that particular international standard to make sure it meets that standard, and then install that device with the labeling from that particular nurdle on there. So, you know, we're always installing these devices so that they won't cause any damage to anybody. Now, Mr. Mayor, you're talking about cattle fences, livestock fences, they can hold up to 45 or 50 joules of energy, and they're basically designed to keep a 2,000-pound animal within a compound. I'm just trying to keep a 200-pound animal out, that's all I'm trying to do. That's why my power restrictions are so low. Now, as far as liability goes, we basically cover all of our customers on umbrella policy. We've got a $6 million umbrella that we always cover all of our customers on. Believe me, I get sued, I'm in business. I don't care what you're doing, whether you're running a lawnmower, a trucking company, even these Uber people who run people around in these little taxi cabs, they're all gonna get sued eventually. So, we basically, you know, cover our customers with that particular liability protection. And the city attorney is right, any piece of legislation that you approve here, you're basically not liable for that anyway, not at any state that I've ever practiced in, and I'm not an attorney. But that's basically what the city attorneys, county attorneys, have all told me when I've actually addressed the liability issue with them. We've actually got several of these fences up in the surrounding counties. Denver, Denver lets me go to 12 feet, but that's because I'm actually guarding marijuana dispensaries over there, and they kinda need it with all the money they've got laying around and all the products. So, there are some exceptions to the rules on height, too. I think I answered all your questions on that. If I didn't, I'd be glad to go ahead and clarify.
Can call you back up if another question arises. Oh, Mr. Gaylor?
Yes, one provision here provides that the placement of electric fence along property adjacent to residential or public zone district shall be a minimum of 20 feet from the property line. And I believe you commented, did I understand you right? You'd suggest no setback from the property line.
Well, basically...
Did you comment on that?
Yes, sir, I did. And the reason I did is there's already a code or a piece of code in existence right now that basically governs fences. All I'm doing, all I wanna do is set myself behind the existing fence that's already there and that's allowed. I think you also mentioned signage. By the standard 60335, I'm required every 60 feet to have a sign up. So, I've got these signs up. They're fairly small, although in some jurisdictions, I have large ones, they're about the size of this old yellow pad here. They're in two languages. They're in two languages, English and Spanish, and I alternate them as I go down the line. So, I've got every 60 feet, you've got a sign that says, "Caution, electric fence, 7,000 volts. Don't touch the fence." So, they're all out there. Now, in Stockton, I had a highway guy out there when I amended the code over there, and he basically made me put signs up about the size of these panels out here that are in front of you, 2 foot by 3 foot. Now, being the electric fence guy, I love those. But it's from an aesthetic point of view, they're fairly large and obtrusive. I wouldn't recommend going that large. I think it's 30 square centimeters or 30 square inches, somewhere around there is what the standard dictates that we operate under, and that's what we do.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Gaylor? Or how about Mr. McBroom?
I'd like to ask Mr. Draper to walk through Mr. Pay's recommended changes. I think some of them can be resolved, and then some of them, he can clarify what our recommendation is, if we could do that.
All right. I've got several people who still have comments, but maybe we can help alleviate some of the comments if y'all do that walkthrough.
Mr. Mayor, there were a few things that were mentioned. One was the trickle charge. I don't believe that our staff has any issues and any objection with a trickle charge making sure that the voltage doesn't drop on a few cloudy days with the solar. So, that, if that is the council's direction, we can make that change. The next was the setback between the perimeter fence and the electric fence. Mr. Pay suggested, I believe, 6 inches and then 3 inches at the gate. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I don't believe that we have any objection to that either. Currently, it's, we said 6 to 3 feet. That's what we had seen in some of our research. I don't think there's any objection to that. We will, the setback from the public and residential is one that we would like to clarify. Currently, our perimeter fence standard is not that that perimeter fence is a solid fence. So, that perimeter fence could be a chain link fence or some kind of other wire mesh. One of the reasons that we did have that setback between public and an industrial property or residential industrial property, such as Pioneer Park, Pioneer Park does border a few industrial properties. If there is that wire mesh fence and a child's ball goes over that fence and they try to reach through, and it is only 6 to 3 inches to 6 inches away, that is one of the reasons why we looked at that requirement of additional setback. We would say that if we did want to revise that to require a solid perimeter fence, I think that staff wouldn't have any objection to that as well, the difference between the public and residential. However, it would be based upon the change to requiring a solid fence instead of just any kind of exterior fence. And then lastly, the height. Again, the 8-foot being the maximum height in our code, we did recognize that Mr. Pay and Electric Guard Dog does desire a 2-foot difference from that perimeter fence and the electric fence. We did think that that could be achieved with a 6-foot perimeter fence and then having the 8-foot electric fence being the same thing as an 8-foot and a 10-foot. So, hopefully, that might have cleared up a few questions as far as any objections or things that we might be able to change before a second reading. And again, I'm happy to-
The only thing you didn't touch on that I recall him talking about was the fact that you'd have to go through a variance process instead of administrative approval and the cumbersomeness of having to do that. Do you want to-
The variance would only be for exceeding that 8-foot height. So, it would still be administrative building permit process if it was only met the 8-foot height. The 10-foot or anything that exceeded the 8-foot would require the variance and show hardship for, just like we do with any other fencing that would require, that would want to go higher than our standards.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to go back to the council now on their comments or questions. Councilman Carson.
I have a few questions for Mr. -- is it Payne?
Counselor, I realize my pain, but it's Pay, P-A-T-E.
P-A-T-E?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm assuming that the service you have is affordable enough that businesses are wanting and desiring your services.
Yes, ma'am. We've actually come to the city staff twice now, and both times, it's been very difficult for us to get anything done. I think we basically laid them both down, as far as I know. I think we just quit on both of them? Or both of them are rolling forward? Okay. Well, my staff's working on it. I didn't know that. So, we've been trying, but I've also held off several others. It's not cheap. It's really not. You know, my average, my average cost for an average customer is somewhere around 850 bucks a month. So, I basically provide a security service for my customer, just like an alarm company, on a monthly service. So, it's not the cheapest thing in the world, but it probably is one of the most effective that there is out there.
And then when they hire you, it's your company that comes in and puts this fence in?
Yes, ma'am.
So, can you tell me what this fence actually looks like?
Sure. It's basically 20 strands of wire, just horizontal to the ground.
Like my grandpa's fence that used to have the electric-
They're 4 inches apart until I get about 4 feet up.
Okay.
Most incursions come low. You know, I live in a very sandy area. People will dig. So, I try to get the fence really tight to the ground. After you get about 6 or 7 feet, most people get a little lazy. They really don't want to go over the top unless it's a 6 or an 8-foot fence and they can jump it. That's why I need that extra 2 feet. I mean, I'm fine with a solid fence or a solid wall between a residential and a public right-of-way. I think that's a great compromise. I still need that 10 feet. I need that 2 extra feet, and I need basically an imposing barrier. But I do, I install it all. I install it, I maintain it, I monitor it, I keep it in good working order. We probably visit every site somewhere between 2 and 5 times a year.
So, visibility, it's really not an unsightly looking-
You really can't see it unless you're basically, well, the signs make it visible. But if I didn't have the signs there, it's very difficult to see, particularly behind a chain link or a wire fence like that. It's just basically the same type of wire, the same gauge of wire, it basically goes invisible. The only thing you can really see is the corner posts.
So, if we're talking aesthetics, that probably really isn't a problem.
I consider it a very beautiful fence, but some people don't.
If we're talking public safety, is it visible enough that anybody would know that they're coming upon this?
With the signs that they're, yes, ma'am. You can see the signs. Most of the times, I mean, they're 50, 60 feet apart. They're pretty tight. And, you know, they're very visible. They're visible in night. They're that high reflective yellow color. So, you're going to be able to really see the signs. They say caution, 7,000 volts. The gates usually have 2 on them, 1 for each panel, so they're really tight on the gate, too. They're visible. The signs are visible. Now, they're not visible from a long way, but if you're fairly close to the fence, say, between me and you, you're going to see the fence. You're going to see the, you're going to see the signs.
So, if emergency responders were responding there, how do we safely get their entrance into there?
Almost always, and I think it's also within the ordinance, is we install an emergency Knox box switch. I don't know if you use Knox box here or not, but most people use Knox boxes.
They do.
Yeah. So, basically, it's a key that's keyed just for Commerce City and their emergency personnel. They have it on every buggy they run in and out of there, fire truck, emergency access truck, ambulance. And they just come up there, hit it, it kills the fence and opens the gate simultaneously so they can run in and put out the fire.
You know, I'll be real honest with you. I can think of a few businesses that if we had them in the city, I would probably prefer them to have something like this around there to deter anybody breaking into their property.
Much more attractive than barbed wire or razor wire.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. McAdonick?
Thank you. I've been, thanks to Google, doing a little research up here. I found a pretty interesting fence standard here in the city of Albany, Oregon. And what they've done is essentially match us in terms of the 8-foot fence standard. But basically, they say, hang on, where did it go? In no instance or zone shall a fence exceed 8 feet except when permitted in 9.3.70, which is their electric fence standard. And in that standard, it allows for the electric fence specifically to be 10 feet. So, what they've done is essentially meet what we hear Mr. Pay recommending, which is have a fence standard, cap at 8 feet. They also require a permit for any fence greater than 6 feet. They go on to specify in terms of the residential boundary that where the property line abuts a residential zoning district, that they then require the solid fence or wall to be between 6 and 8 feet high on that shared property line. And they also have an increased requirement for warning signs to be posted at a 25-foot interval instead of the interval that we heard from Mr. Pay. I have forwarded this link to the city manager, deputy city manager, and to Chris Kramer for them to look at. I think there's some really good specifics in this that don't show up in our current version of the draft ordinance, including specifics about the emergency access that we just heard Mr. Pay refer to with regard to the Knox box, et cetera. So, this gets into specifications around how the fence is powered, the gate considerations, bar department ingress, et cetera. I would ask that, and if I can have the city manager forward this, or I can relay it to the rest of council for them to look at. I would think it would be helpful for staff to look at this. And again, it's just an example. I was able to find a couple, and this one seemed to be pretty comprehensive. And again, it meets the balance of our existing 8-foot fence standard while creating a specific accommodation for this electric fence. And I think, you know, the more we think about this, again, our guidelines are defined to determine the view of this property from the outside, right? That's our fence standard. How does this property, or how do properties look when I'm on the street, when I'm approaching a property, et cetera? This electric fence is inside the property. It's inside that fence. So, the vast majority of that fence surface covers the electric fence. So, I mean, you're talking about a fairly small component of fence that's going to project above whatever the existing fence material might be. And so, I would think we could find some way to, where a business feels like this is warranted, obviously, we've heard the variance process exists. We also know that, and we hear this, you know, in any line of business, extra hoops and extra hurdles cost time and money. And so, where we can find a reasonable compromise and allow for the accommodation for these kinds of things that are proven solutions, I think we should look to have that occur within the permitting process and not require the variance where we can avoid it. But that's just my two cents.
Mr. Amador?
Thank you for, Mr. Pay, for coming in. So, I'm an architect by trade, so I'm very visual. Things need to be orthogonal, in line. And we're discussing both zoning and getting mixed up in life safety building code. And so, from the zoning code perspective, and I'm also on the Board of Adjustments, looking at this from the perspective of, rather than by exception, but by generality and how things are set up, I did hear Mr. Draper put together a solid fence proposition out there to try to make this thing a little bit safer. But I'm a little concerned about a 2-foot fence, a little bit higher than stepping back and someone stepping on. My position when I think about fences is that people, fences only keep people who want to be out, and people who want to get in, they're going to get in. So, rather than reversing the whole height exception for all fences at 10 feet, I would like to keep it at the 10 feet, or the 8 feet, sorry, rather than the 10 feet, just because we can separate these out a little bit. And when I look at a property, I want to make sure that it's uniform across the board. So, those are my thoughts, and I do thank you for coming in, though.
Thank you, Mr. Amador.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Pay. I'm looking at the picture right now of the property and the fence right now. What is the high-threat fence? Because it has the top of the fence that slopes, and is that a V, so it's on both sides or is it just one side?
I have no idea what picture you're talking about.
Me neither. It's in the presentation.
Well, yeah, well, I'm just, I mean, this is the property you're talking about.
Okay. My, I thought you were talking about this property right here. Is this one of your clients? A potential client? No?
Oh, no. No, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
What's that for things?
Okay. I'm going to use this for an example. Could you bring up that picture of the fence for the property on Monaco? Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Just trying to visualize. And would you say that fence is, since you're in the fence business, would that be a 6-foot or 8-foot fence?
It looks like it's 8 feet to me.
Okay. So, the construction of your fence would not be a solid chain link thing, right?
No, sir. The only thing you'd be able to see above that is 3 strands of wire because I'm separated 8 inches apart. So, that's the top strand, and then 2 more, and the last one will be almost even with the top.
Okay.
You'd only be able to see 3 strands of wire above that.
I see. Okay. Yeah, I'm visualizing what you're saying. I also could look at the 8 feet and 6 feet. Not, you know, being consistent as far as how things are, I know we need to change things as time goes forward. I understand about the medical marijuana, you know, the marijuana trade and with the security tied around that, and I understand that in far as variance go. I would say that, based on what you're asking, I think that would have to go to a variance process. That way, things would be consistent and only when there's a need that you come forward and have that as an ask and not something we set forward. So, you know, we're starting to change things. So, that's my concern. If there's something you want to do is go buy certain properties based on locations and what the threat is and what exactly is behind that fence that people need to get to as well. So, to me, that would bring on a variance based on what you're trying to secure. So, I think that would, to me, would be an ask and not something that's set because it should be based on location and property.
I think we already covered location in industrial zones. I think we're basically only in industrial zones. We're basically restricted to zones anyway.
Right.
We're not asking to go out in commercial zones or anything like that.
You're saying-
Even though allowed by law in some of those. But, you know, once you're in there, having to go through a variance, just depending on the type of business you're in, just seems a little ludicrous to me.
Well-
As opposed to these guys who are right here in this particular spot, they've got heavy equipment back there that's very valuable, and just taking a small part off something like that could render it useless for months, months on vandalism. And to basically go through a process where, hey, you guys have an RV, you've basically got a bunch of RVs back there, you don't warrant protection as opposed to someone who has caterpillar-type equipment and does warrant protection? I think that's a decision they need to make and not a zoning Board of Adjustment. That's just my opinion.
Well, we have, currently, we have a few businesses, well, quite a few businesses that have heavy equipment, and I haven't heard the need for exactly what you're saying. So, as I'm saying, as far as that level of security, and I can understand about the marijuana industry and all that, and what's behind the fence that needs to be secure at that level, I think that should be an ask at that time and not for us to set that as going forward as a standard.
I can assure you, Mr. Douglas, I have several, I have several customers here that I have not even brought to the city because it's very tough to get a permit here for this.
Okay.
They're out there.
And just not to, not to call them out, but just can you give an example of what type of business would-
We've got 2 right in front of y'all now. What are the 2 businesses we have out there? Both of them are automobile recyclers, 2 automobile recyclers.
Okay. That's, but that's, I'm 1 out of 9, so that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you, sir.
All right. Mr. Bullock? No?
It wouldn't prove any point for me to comment on anything right now. All it would be is my opinion again, so I'm just going to let it go.
Good call. We don't need a debate. All right. Seeing no one else, and I'm sorry, I thought it was Pay.
It's Pay, P-A-T-E. Our handwriting's horrible.
And you know what? There for a while, I was thinking it was Payne, and I thought, what the heck is a guy named Payne dealing with electric fence for? That doesn't make sense. But thank you for coming in this evening.
Thank you for your time. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. All right. So, the council has a few options, and before them, we need to- So the council has a few options, and before them, we need to decide how we're going to deal with ordinance 2020, because there are multiple changes to land development code that are rolled into this, one of those being electric fence. I believe you have the opportunity, one, to pull off the electric fence piece until we refine it; two, make some amendments to the electric fence piece; three, approve it as-is; or you amend it and have them make the changes before we see it on second reading. Is that how you all on staff would see the options before us this evening?
On that particular section of the amendments, yes, I think you've summarized it well. It would also be good, before you move out of the public hearing, to make sure there's no one else in the audience that wants to comment on anything.
Absolutely. All right. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come and give, address the City Council concerning ordinance 2020? See, yes, ma'am. Come on forward. I almost cut you off.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Laura Gatling. My address is 10479 Von Way. I am a resident of Commerce City, and I work in the telecommunications industry. So I was looking at the agenda for tonight, and I saw that there was a code revision proposed for the telecom portion of the code specific to height. I did have a chance to speak with Jared earlier today, and I have a meeting set up with him for next week, but I just wanted to briefly make a statement about what my interpretation and kind of how the code reads. Basically, we all use wireless devices, we all use phones. It's an infrastructure that all of us have come to rely upon, and unfortunately, my phone doesn't work very well at home, and I know that a lot of us suffer with that as well. So from my perspective, these proposed changes to the ordinance do not incentivize wireless carriers to want to build sites. In fact, it would be going in the other direction. Now, the way that Jared explained it to me was that the current code has been interpreted to already process a request for additional height as a variance instead of as an exception. I know that there was just a lot of communication about variances, but the way that the last sentence of the code reads currently, the Board of Adjustment would have the option of granting an exception for additional height, and the way that it's going to be written, if adopted, would be that the Board of Adjustment, after a meeting, could grant a variance for height. And I'm sure that you're all aware that the onus for approving a variance is quite substantial in comparison to that of an exception. So one of the benefits to, at least in the code, allowing for a taller site or allowing a venue to get that approval would be the potential for less sites over time. So again, I do have a meeting set up with Jared to try and talk through a couple of the other challenges with the code, like how we don't allow any wireless sites to go in residential districts with the way that the PUDs are written, at least in the north end of town. If we wanted to see wireless coverage someplace at a church, it's not something that the code would allow for. So I will definitely be addressing that, as well as some of the setback requirements that are a little bit unrealistic for the wireless industry to meet in general. So, excuse me, I liked your comments about jumping through hoops and hurdles and how those cost money, because going through extra processes for something that we all actually want is not something that, again, incentivizes an industry to provide the services that we want. So that's all that I had. Thank you.
A couple of comments. First of all, thank you for coming in, and thank you for bringing it to our attention. And part of our job here is to juggle the fact that we want to build and maintain a quality community. And so height issues are in effect. You heard the discussion over the fences. Setbacks are a concern. What we have to do is try to balance it so that we can meet the needs of the residents and those services that you're providing, as well as aesthetically pleasing community. So we don't want more cell towers that are shorter. We don't want taller cell towers that take away the view of the mountains for people, that kind of stuff. So we'll ask our staff a few questions and get back with you, but I wanted to just let you know that in the variance process, what you have to show is a hardship. So if, because you have a shorter tower and you need a variance, because that's the only way you're going to get service through the area is because of obstacles that are too large around that tower, then you would have to prove a hardship, and that's where the hard part comes in. If you don't have a hardship, then they're not going to grant it. It's kind of like for setbacks on homes and everything else. Without that hardship, you're not going to be granted that variance. So thank you for coming in, and I'm going to go directly to the staff. Just stand by in case we have more additional questions.
Thank you.
Jared, talk to us about cell towers and service provided by these, the standards of where we're setting the standard and where it meets with the rest of the industry.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We did have a conversation earlier today and have a meeting set up to hear some of those concerns. This is not, these minor amendments were not intended to be an overhaul of any one section. Specifically, there is a very large section in our land development code regarding telecommunications structures and facilities. That is not something we went into depth to make amendments to during these kind of annual minor amendments. However, one of the things that we did change is that within our height exception language, it was basically pointing to the fact that a telecommunications facility, if it wanted additional height, was a variance. However, that language was not clear. It seemed like it could, since it was in the height exception section of our land development code, it looked like it would be one of the height exceptions. And so there was some language that was really just not clear throughout our code, whether it was a height exception or it was a variance. In the last two to three years, I believe we've only had maybe one telecommunications facility that's been approved for additional height, and that was processed as a variance. And so we wanted to make sure that that language was clear, that in the height exception section of our code, that it pointed directly to that telecommunications facilities that wanted additional height had to go through that variance process, and there wouldn't be additional confusion just because it was in the height exception section of our code. That's currently what the change as part of ordinance 2020 is. Obviously, if there is a desire to look at more in-depth into that telecommunications facility section as a whole, and that is something our staff is willing to do, but this, the minor amendments as part of ordinance 2020 were not intended for any kind of in-depth change to that. It was more of making something clear.
On that note, part of my concern is if we had something that didn't really state that you had to go through a variance process, it was kind of just in there, and now we're going to make it a variance process with, and I'm sitting here thinking about service that we have, lack of service that we have, I could use a tall cell tower by my house, you can't get phone calls on Highway 2. I mean, there's some serious issues that we have because of lack of service, and I don't want to prohibit better service in our community because we put into some type of a restriction that is going to be cumbersome, as Mr. McAdonny stated earlier, to get through the process where it's going to drive those services away from us when we have an obligation to provide service to our community as well. So I'm looking for that balance, Mr. Draper, and I don't know, and I see Mr. McBroom over there waving at me. But those are part of my concerns, and I'll go to Mr. McBroom, because apparently he has an answer for me. Mr. McBroom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a clarification. What the language in the ordinance reads with this amendment would be, in industrial districts, a height up to 70 feet can be approved by exception administratively. It would, this language then clarifies if an applicant is seeking a height greater than 70 feet, then a variance would be necessary. And 70 feet's not the normal height limit for structures in the industrial districts, is it, Mr. Draper?
That's correct. A 50-foot is the maximum height for a standard structure outside of telecommunications.
So 50 feet is the normal maximum height for structures in the industrial districts. Language in the ordinance allows, through an administrative exception process, up to 70 feet. It would only be over 70 feet that a variance from the Board of Adjustments would be necessary. I just wanted to clarify.
What's the standard cell tower height? So just in question to the 70-foot height, are we going 100 and getting into FAA-type space that we have to get approvals there? I don't know what...
I don't know.
Ma'am, would you please address that for me?
Sure.
What's the cell, what's the average cell tower height?
It's going to depend on the carrier. So it really depends on who the carrier is, what their coverage objective is, and some of that.
Give me a ballpark on height.
Truly, truly depends on the cell spacing, and it depends on a lot of other things. Your code requires that a tower be built for two carriers. So whenever anyone's going in, they try to make sure that the height's going to work for not only themselves, but someone else that might be co-locating, because of course that's part of the code. I mean, easily 100 feet would be something that could work for many carriers, but I can't, I can't speak for everybody. I don't know what their coverage objectives are, you know. The FAA question I can very clearly answer, and that is that any tower under 200 feet would go through a screening process, well, any tower would, and typically, any tower over 200 feet would be something that would be more subject to FAA scrutiny.
I had a flagpole, I had a flagpole that was under 70 feet that had to deal with FAA because of the proximity to the fence of the airport.
Right, right, and exactly, and you've got, you know, your...
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I get it. That's why I brought that up, and I brought it up more as a pun, because 100 feet, you know, when you get 70 feet, it seems tall to me, but I'm not in the telecommunications business. Maybe Mr. McAdonny and some of the others will be able to address that for me. What I'm trying to do is reach a balance of service for our residents, yet to make sure that we have an aesthetically pleasing community as well. So I'm going to turn it over and go back to the council. Someone, can you tell us your name again?
Laura Gatling.
Laura. Okay. Thank you, Laura. We'll call on you if we have other questions. Okay, Mr. McAdonny, bailing me out.
Well, I was prepared to make a motion earlier to set aside both the electric fence and the cell tower issue so that we can move on tonight. I think I will start my comment and go to that point here in a minute. I think the subject of the cell tower discussion is one that warrants further discussion in study session, and obviously, it would be good to have, is it Ms. Gatling? Did I hear that right? Gatling, thank you, sorry, I could not hear. Continue to discuss with staff. In the spirit of full disclosure, I work for a telecommunications company. I work for Verizon. I'm on the wireline side of the house. I don't deal with cell towers, though I have a cousin-in-law who builds towers, so I have some distant knowledge of that. I think Ms. Gatling's last comment was very key, which is, it's all situational, right? We are trying to prescribe a tower formula in our code that says towers are going to be this big, and if they're not this big, then they're going to go through this extra-special approval. Again, thanks to Google, I was just surfing around, and there's a selltowerinfo.com for folks who want to go look at it, and there's a section on cell tower planning and zoning, and one of the things that it talks about is the cost that a carrier might incur going through the permitting process. And it can cost upwards of $40,000 and take a long, long time for a tower to be permitted and approved. So you think about a growing community where our residents are complaining about coverage, and if we have processes that make it tougher for a carrier to want to do business or consider setting up a tower, we're not serving our citizens. So we're not going to solve this tonight. I think there's more for us all to understand about this, and I don't want to put staff on the spot. I would like to, I don't want to make more of what is on the agenda tonight than might be, but I think we've had enough questions posed that it warrants us looking more closely at this section and perhaps, as we heard earlier from Mr. Draper, the broader telecom section. Mr. Draper, it sounds like you have a response?
Yeah, Councilman McAdonny, I just wanted to let you know, Mr. Kramer reminded me that in our 2015 work plan, actually taking a look at the telecommunications section is part of that. And so, again, these are the minor amendments, but that is also one of the reasons why I suggested that Mrs. Gatling and I meet, so that we can, we can actually hear someone from the industry, as well as a resident of our community. We can discuss, you know, kind of the ins and outs of what that really would look like as far as our code, and not creating something that is prohibitive to industry and making coverage worse or get worse, that we can really come to some solution.
I appreciate that, and I think the last comment I was going to make in the spirit of that discussion is, obviously, we are fortunate to have you as a resident and somebody in the industry. I think it would actually make sense for this kind of an item, for us to reach out to a couple of key contacts in the industry and ask, are we a pain to do business with, right? Are we a place that you would, or, you know, you've had a difficult time doing business as part of our effort to look into that bit of the code? So either way, when ready, I've got a motion ready.
I'm almost ready for a motion. I have one more comment. Mr. Douglas. Are you going to make a motion?
Mr. Draper, thank you. Since we're on the subject there, and we do have a tower up north, that tower is in unincorporated Adams County, correct? The one on 104th, on that little ranch, or the Horace Ranch?
Yes, sir. It is.
All right. While we're doing this, we could also find out what the code is for in the county as well. Thanks.
Okay. I see no further discussion. Mr. McAdonny. No, that's not a public hearing.
I would, actually, it was a public hearing, was it?
You know what?
I'm sorry, it was an ordinance. Thank you.
Mr. McAdonny.
Yes.
Just before you do that, I want to ask one more time, is there anyone in the audience who has anything they want to say to this council about ordinance 2020? Mr. McAdonny, go ahead.
Thank you. I would move that we approve ordinance 2020 with the exceptions of the section on telecommunications facilities and electric fences, and that we allow staff to consider modifications to the electric fence provision, given feedback from our testimony tonight from both council and the public, as well as separately to look at the telecom and fence provisions as part of the 2015 work plan. I would recommend we hold off on any short-term changes unless there is some pressing need. I know that makes this a very long motion, so I can go back and narrow that down. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So it's pass everything with the exception of electric fences and telecom. Staff comes back fairly quickly on the electric fence on second reading, and height exceptions, I'm sorry, I keep saying telecom, height exceptions. And then on the electric, are the, yeah, it's electric, I'm sorry, electric fences on second reading, and the tower is part of our telecom 2015 discussion. Is that better?
Got it. Mr. Bullock. I got you next, Mr. Benson. Second, I have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion before we go to a vote? Mr. Benson, your lights lit up?
I'd just like to ask the city attorney, do you understand what this motion is?
Right. Yes. In fact, that's the very type of thing I was going to recommend, because it gives the staff an opportunity to take a look at those two sections, and if they're ready to be back, inserted back again for second reading, I don't think that would be considered a major deviation to require the ordinance to revert back to first reading, because the overall scheme of things for this ordinance covers a multitude of things, so it would not be an amendment that would change the entire purpose of the ordinance. So we could do that. If it's not ready to be inserted on second reading, you could pass it on second reading and then take up an amendment as necessary at a later date on the telecommunications, if that weren't ready, as an example, so...
But you can draft in writing exactly what we're voting on tonight?
Yes.
So we'll know what's passing?
Right.
Okay.
Because what's passing is all of the ordinance, with the exception of the electric fence provision and the telecommunications section. That's on first reading.
Okay. Cool. If I might, I understood the motion a little bit different. We are to make changes to the electric fence provisions to try to address the comments tonight between first and second reading. It's the telecommunications amendment that's in this bundle of amendments that we're pulling out to be discussed at a later date. That's out of my question. I'm just kind of wondering.
Mr. McAdonny said to allow staff, to allow staff to consider modifications on electric fences.
Between first and second reading, right, so that we can hear that on second reading. Telecommunications, I suggest that we take out altogether, and that that come back as part of the 2015 work plan.
All right. Is everybody clear on the motion on the floor? A motion and a second. Mr. Attorney, please... Mr. Attorney, please read the title.
Title of the ordinance, 2020 reads, An Ordinance Aiding Various Sections of the Land Development Code.
Are you clear on the?
Did we take telecommunications out?
Yes.
Yes.
And it's not telecommunications, it's called height exception.
Gotcha. All right, everybody understands what's going on, right?
Right.
All right, I have a motion and a second. The title's been read. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. All right, for the record, ordinance 2020, with the amendments stated in the motion, approved unanimously by the city council, seated. And thank you, folks, for coming in tonight. All right, we're moving on. Ordinance 2021. Will staff please make the presentation?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. It's a pleasure to be before you for the first time in 2015. Try and keep my remarks fairly brief this evening, given the, the study session that we had just a few months ago. As previously mentioned, the ordinance 2021 is the adoption of the Commerce City Historic Preservation Plan. Again, there are three separate sections that we'll touch on briefly this evening, a project framework, the plan components, and then the planning commission's recommendation. This project is currently in the final phase of, of work, if you will. We are here for final adoption before city council. We were at planning commission the previous month, and then study sessions with both this body and planning commission in late 2014. Highlighted by these dates, again, October, we had a planning commission study session, November with city council, December with our planning commission, and then we're here this evening for adoption. As I'm sure you all are very well aware, the council has received an increasing number of requests for participation in historic preservation efforts. The city does not currently have an overall or comprehensive guide for making those decisions, so in the fall of 2012, council directed our staff to create the historic preservation plan this before you this evening. This plan is much like some, some recent sub-plans to the comprehensive plan. It's been adopted by city council, specifically the art plan or the stationary and master plan. The, the real role of this plan is to give us more specific direction related to historic preservation throughout our city. So, this plan will provide that comprehensive direction that we need. It will also identify specific strategies for implementing historic preservation. This plan will not create the ordinance for historic preservation, or designate properties, or establish a historic preservation board. That would be part of a Phase Two, or a Generation X, if you will, kind of that next step. In the creation of the plan, we did rely on a lot of advisory groups, the first being the Commerce City Historical Society. They were invaluable in terms of, of making sure the document is unique to Commerce City and making sure the history was accurate. We had a technical advisory group comprised of several professionals in the historic preservation community, and then as well as our city's senior staff. Additionally, we have been closely involved with planning commission and city council as we've drafted the document. In terms of outreach, it was also critical for us to get the input of the community. We did have an open house in early 2013. We did a presentation to our senior advisory committee. There were online surveys available for the spring and summer of 2013. We have a website that's been operational since the early part of 2013. We attended both summer outreaches in 2013 and 2014 to get input from the public, as well as to report back on some of our findings. In terms of components of the plan, you'll see seven different components, excuse me, six different components, an introduction, a brief history of the city, the role of the plan, the foundational elements that we use to create the future goals, objectives, and implementation strategies that are found in the historic preservation strategy section, and then finally, an appendices that highlights how we got the information that we, we did through this process. There are seven specific goals identified by the plan. These are overarching goals that we intend, as a community, to achieve over, over a period of time, and they are to provide the understanding of the city's history, so that there's a solid foundation for our historic preservation efforts, to participate in those educational opportunities related to historic preservation, to identify those resources, and after they are identified, explore strategies for honoring them, to use the historic preservation as an economic development tool, as well as develop, maintain, support, and establish partnerships for historic preservation, and then finally, promote historic preservation as a tool for creating a sense of place. In order to achieve those overarching goals, there are a series of implementation strategies, three separate tiers, if you will. One is kind of that one-to-three-year tier that really tries to take advantage of the momentum that's been created with, with the creation of this plan. The second tier is kind of a, a longer-term vision, where we would start to really kind of fine-tune and implement the historic preservation efforts, and then as well, there's a list of continuous or ongoing implementation strategies that would benefit from the historic preservation plan. For council's reference, initially, our staff has looked at kind of creating the one-to-three-year priorities broken out in 2015 and 2016, in no particular order, in this coming year, looking at doing some things like beginning to identify historic resources, establishing criteria for what's considered historic. Once we lay some of that foundation, or some of that groundwork, we could then start to do some, some next-step things, such as become a certified local government, establish a historic preservation board, do some of those, those things. With that, on December 3 of 2014, the planning commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval to city council for the adoption of the Commerce City Historic Preservation Plan. And with that, that would conclude staff's presentation. However, we are certainly available for any questions that council may have.
Thank you. Council have any questions for the staff at this time? Mr. Benson? All right. Seeing no one.
Thank you.
I'm going to, I know, she's waiting. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on ordinance 2021? Please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Mr. Mayor and council, thank you. My name is Deborah Bullock, 62130 Ivanhoe Street, Commerce City, Colorado. So, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Commerce City Historical Society, and we want to thank you for your support and the direction that you've given the city to establish this preservation plan. We support it, and I think you've seen our letter of support, and we want to continue to be a part of it, and we're looking forward, and we're excited about the possibilities of what we can preserve and how we can implement all the goals that have been put forth. I want to thank all the staff members, Brian McBroom, Jim Hayes, Chris Kramer, Steve Tims, Paul Workman, and Terry Brown, for their commitment to this. We enjoyed the meetings, and we're very excited to see this put forth. And as you, I don't know if you know this, but one of the properties that we thought were to be preserved has been sold, and it's probably going to be demolished. And that's the Emerson, Ann Emerson Johnson land that was the Johnson Dairy on 56th Avenue. So, the, the buildings are still there. Of course, it's not a dairy anymore, and so, probably within the next six months to a year, all those buildings will probably be demolished. And so, if, if you don't do this, a lot of things, a lot of buildings in the city that are historic will probably go away, and some already have gone away. And so, I think it's really important that you're taking this step, and we are very appreciative of it, and we thank you for your support for the Historical Society, and we are very happy about this. So, thank you.
And Deb, before you step down from the podium, I just want to tell you, you know, you, you've started something years ago with the Historical Society, and started to move the city in the right direction from preserving, for preserving some of our past and our history, which is important that we, you know, we have that, to know where we're going. And, and so, thank you to getting things started. You really were the push behind helping us get into having a historic preservation plan. And, you know, we may, we, we may see some of those buildings go away today, that we don't want to go away, but I have to be optimistic that we'll be able to save some of the ones that otherwise would have went away if we hadn't have taken these steps.
That's right.
And the steps we're about to take. So, thank you for coming in, and thank you to the Historical Society for supporting the vision of, of preserving our history.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Douglas, did you have?
Yes, Ms. Bullock. I just want to tell you also, thank you very much for your work you have done, and a lot of people don't realize that you published a book on Commerce City history, and thank you for that work you did to bring that book forward.
You're welcome.
Don't leave yet. Councilwoman Carson?
Ms. Bullock, I just want to say thank you. I know your heart and soul has been put into this, and it's because of people like you, who are diligent and force us to understand what happens when we don't preserve the past. You've had a, a lot of influence, I will say, on myself, as far as to understanding that importance, that you never let some things go, and you have to preserve them. So, thank you very much for that, and all the work and guidance that you have given us.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'm open for a mo, well, let me go back to the audience. Is anyone else in the audience who would like to address the council on this item? Seeing no one, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Bullock?
Move to, move to approve the facts and findings of the planning commission?
Nope, we don't need that. We need ordinance 2021.
Oh, okay. I, I knew that.
I know.
Okay, yeah. Move to approve ordinance 2021 on first reading. Council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Amador?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to introduce 20, ordinance 2021 this evening. City attorney, please read the title.
Title of ordinance 2021 reads as follows, An Ordinance Adopting the Commerce City Historic Preservation Plan.
All righty, we have a motion and a second, and the title's been read. I'm going to call for a roll call. For the record, ordinance 2021 is introduced unanimously by the city council this evening. We'll move on to ordinance 2041. Anyone on council have any questions regarding this ordinance? Seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this ordinance? Seeing none, I'm open for a mo, motion for the introduction of ordinance 2041. Mr. McAdonny?
Move to introduce ordinance 2041 on first reading. Council is seated.
Mr. Benson?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, An Ordinance Aiding the 2015 Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, by the recognition of the Adams County Open Space Grant in the amount of $200,000 to be used for the Frontier Neighborhood Park Project and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion and a second. Title's been read. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2041 is introduced unanimously by the council this evening. And we'll move on to ordinance 2042. Anyone on council have any questions regarding this ordinance? Benson?
That was for the previous one.
Douglas?
Yes. Sorry, I didn't push for the first one, but this $518,000 would replace 2K money, and that 2K of $518,000 will go back into the 2K fund, correct?
That's partially correct, provided construction contingency isn't necessary to complete both projects. Scott Hergenrader, the program director for the 2K projects, is here to provide a, a more detailed answer, if that would be helpful.
Okay. Yes, would you like that?
Please go on forward.
Good evening, councilman. The question related to the fund, and similar to the prior ordinance that just went through, this was an augmentation of funding for these projects. The city could complete the projects with 2K fund, funding, as originally described to the voters, but there was an opportunity to enhance and augment these facilities with additional funding. So, both for this ordinance and the prior ordinance, this funding will actually augment and allow additional features to be constructed at the same time as the 2K money is being deployed. So, this is creating great leverage for the citizens of Commerce City.
But I can provide a, a key clarification. When city council saw final project budgets, at the time the construction contracts were awarded, total cost of the projects from that point on is not increasing.
That's correct. That, that is absolutely correct.
The, the additional features Mr. Hergenrader mentioned were those features that were presented to you at, at the time that city council awarded the construction contracts for both projects. So, it's true, the grant funds are being used to allow for additional amenities in both facilities, but it's those amenities that you saw when you approved the contracts for construction several weeks back. Does that make sense?
Okay, so, because the way it explained to me was, if this grant was approved and presented to us, we accepted that we were going to take that portion out of the construction cost, that $2K, and this open space grant will replace that, giving us the, the ability to use that other $200,000 or $518,000 someplace, some other project down the road.
Again, I'll ask Scott to correct me if I'm wrong, but that's true, provided we are, we don't need to use construction contingency funds for either project. We've set aside money for contingencies for both projects, and if we don't need those contingency funds, we should have money left over.
That, that's correct. In fact, the applications for this funding in both cases was done prior to going to market for bid. So, to Mr. McBroom's point, the contingency that was set aside was sufficient for what we understood the project to be, but until we actually got the bids in, and were comfortable that we could present the contracts to city council for the amounts that we presented, there was uncertainty as to whether or not all of the funds would be capable of being deployed. Any contingency that's remaining at the end of the project will be capable of being redeployed.
Yes. So, these projects won't exceed the 3.9 or the, whatever they are, correct? Based on what was accepted and awarded, right?
I'm sorry, the 3.9?
Yeah, whatever we accept in the contract, this is not additional funding, this is...
That, that's correct. The contract that was awarded includes all the funding necessary to complete the project as, as presented to city council.
All right.
So, the receipt of these grant funds do not increase either project budget?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. For the record, can you read it quick? State your name and address. I had a request from council, since I did that to everybody else.
Scott Hergenrader, 2229 Blake Street, Denver, Colorado.
Thank you. All right. All right. Now, is there any other questions from the council? I've got Bullock and McAdonny, but I think they're ready for a motion. Seeing none, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come up and speak to council on Ordinance 2042? Seeing no one else. Mr. McAdonny?
Move to introduce Ordinance 2042 on first reading. Council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Amador?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to introduce Ordinance 2042. Mr. Gaylor?
Title of Ordinance 2042 reads as follows: An Ordinance Amending the 2015 Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the Recognition of the Adams County Open Space Grant in the Amount of $518,281 to be Used for the Outdoor Leisure Pool at Pioneer Park Project and the Authorization of the Expenditure Thereof.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second, and title's been read. We're going to have a roll call vote. For the record, Ordinance 2042 passes or is introduced unanimously by the City Council this evening. Takes us into the next portion of our meeting, Administrative Council Business. Is there any Administrative Council business to come before the City Council this evening? Mr. Teeter?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a little bit of an update. The Tribute Review Board did meet on December 16th. We approved some catalyst funds for two items. The first one was for 39 new unique street signs with the word Derby above the street name in the Derby District. So, we're going to get 39 brand-new signs down there for the Historical Society area. Also, we also approved 19 crosswalk locations in the Derby District to be striped in white paint for pedestrian safety. That'll also be done in the first quarter.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you. A couple of weeks ago, I recently had an altercation with a resident of our community. That resulted in a police report, and my actions during that event were embarrassing. I deeply apologize to residents and to my colleagues on City Council and to my family and to the city I love dearly. In a moment of road rage, which was road rage at me, I let my emotions anger get the best of me, and a gentleman in this situation flung me off. And I was upset, and I followed him to, when he was in the community, and to tell him his driving was unacceptable for the, for safety and concern. We had a heated allocation, and some words were exchanged, and improperly derogatory words were used, which I don't even let my kids use those words. Unfortunately, the gentleman and I agreed that the entire incident was childish, and therefore, as a better way to resolve the issue, I shook hands with the gentleman. Since then, I've continued to reflect on this incident and think about my actions as a City Council member. I'm truly sorry and ashamed of my actions as a person, as a dad, and a public figure. I hold a community trust and respect in the highest regard, and I am sorry for this violation. I will strive to be better in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. In this day and age, each of us should remember we're elected officials first and private citizens second. As such, we should adhere to the highest ethical standards as stated in our policies and conduct ourselves in a manner that does not bring disrespect or disrepute on the office or to the city of Commerce City. Mr. Bullock?
I think I speak for all of us when I move that the City Council of Commerce City does not support or condone Councilman Douglas's action on December 24th, 2014. His behavior is inconsistent with this city's council values and visions for the city. So, I'm making a motion that we, that is the motion, that this city is not consistent with the city's values.
Not supporting or condoning. Is there a second? Mr. McAdonny?
Second.
I have a motion and a second disputing the conduct of Mr. Douglas on his actions December 24th, 2014. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. And, Mr. Douglas, I appreciate the apology, and just be careful on what you have to say. You know, words hurt a lot of people in different ways, and I appreciate you coming forward tonight and apologizing for the actions.
Thank you.
All right. Any further Administrative Council business? All right. We'll move into reports. Mr. McBroom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Prior to tonight's meeting, we distributed via email this week's edition of the City Manager Report. I want to call your attention to a couple of events under the City-led Events portion of the report on the first page. We do have a couple of committee meetings coming up. It's that time of year that the Legislative Committee is starting to meet, although the Legislative Committee is asked to attend. Any council member is certainly open to attend the Legislative Committee meeting. That's going to be Monday, January 12th at 5:00. Likewise, the City Council Retreat Committee will be meeting this Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Although it's important for the committee members to attend, it's also open to any council member who would like to attend the Retreat Planning Committee Thursday at 6:00. In terms of council follow-up, I'll hit these quickly. Councilman Douglas asked us to do some research on a homeless voucher program. We provided an update in tonight's report. Mayor Ford had asked for some information on how we advertised the Christmas event at the Buffalo Run Golf Course. So, we have a little bit of information there to summarize how we got the word out about that event. Councilman Douglas brought to our attention concerns about speeding at the time of Derby Winterfest, so we've passed that along to the Police Department, who's going to put some extra patrols in that area. Councilman Benson asked us to look into an ESL program. We've provided an update tonight on our research into that. We also have provided an update on work that staff has done to respond to a City Council request to provide additional benefits to the high school golf teams that practice and conduct some of their matches at the Buffalo Run Golf Course. So, there's a very good summary of the work that we've done and the additional benefits that staff is going to be offering to those student athletes and tracking their usage of those things. And then, we also have an update on Councilman Amador's request to review the Cops versus Kids football game that we last had in 2010. So, we have an update there for City Council to take a look at. We have an update this week on the progress of construction of 104th Avenue Phase 3B, and then we've attached the City Council work schedule. So, as always, we're happy to answer any questions about any of those items, so please contact me if you have any questions.
Great. And one thing, since you're on your list, I'm sure you're aware of it, down, down Street Light Pole on Quebec.
We did see that due to the slippery weather, and work is in progress to get that replaced.
All right. Mr. Gaylor?
I have nothing further to report, except to wish everyone a Happy New Year.
Thank you. A couple of things. First, I'd like to start off by thanking our Public Works Department. You know, they all went out and had to start plowing snow on Christmas Day, and we, we're all spending time with our families, and they give that opportunity up to fulfill a service to the community, and I want to thank them for those who had to go out and take time away from their family to clean the roads so that the rest of us all could be safe in our community. I think it's important to always do that because it's that thing that a lot of times gets overlooked, doesn't get noticed. And I know we have a lot of people in our community, in our, in our city, parks departments taking care of parking lots and things like that, but those plow drivers have to go out on Christmas Day. And a lot of it's because I was a plow driver at one time for this community, and I remember spending some Christmas Eves and not being able to get home with my young kids on Christmas morning. It makes it tough, and I want them to know that they're appreciated. As the same for police officers that are out and having to be on patrol on those evenings, it's important that they know that we appreciate the work they do on some of those days that they would much rather not be doing that. I'll go through my report fairly quick. Because of the holidays, there wasn't a lot to report on. I actually had a little bit of time to spend with my family, which is good. They need that once in a while. I did attend a reading event at Salud to help with the awareness of the need for literacy in our community. The Denver Nuggets, some of the Denver Nuggets were there to read to the kids, as was our Police Department was there in force to help read to the kids. Myself and Mr. Teeter attended a DIA mediation. We had the Commerce City Developer Social, and kudos go out to the city staff that put that on. I know it was very beneficial to our developers. I believe it was just as beneficial to the City Council to make those acquaintances and help build those relationships, to help move our development community forward and to understand some of the hurdles that they have. And it's my pleasure to report, they didn't have many, very, very few comments of anything wrong. They're actually pretty positive about how the city's working with them. And then, I can't help but to mention the Heart and Souls Program through Rotary, that me and Mr. Bullock are both Rotarians, and every year, they have a project called the Heart and Souls Program, and there are families within our community that are identified that the kids, most of the time, wouldn't get anything for Christmas, and Rotary makes sure that they have a pair of shoes and some socks at Christmas time to get them through the next school year. So, it was our pleasure to go to meet these families at Walmart and purchase their shoes and socks for them through our program, and it's probably one of the most rewarding programs that Rotary does throughout the year. For me personally, I would think Mr. Bullock would say the same.
It was great.
Because you get to meet these families, you actually get to let them do the shopping, and you get to go up and make sure that they have what they need, and they are all very, very thankful for the opportunity to have, to have their kids get some shoes to make sure that they're taken care of. And then, we had the Rotary Christmas Party, which Mr. Bullock actually was the person who set it all up this year. It was a Buffalo Run. We ran out of room, but it was quite a success, and the chief is also, our chief of police is also a Rotarian, and he was at the Christmas party. It was just great because we get to see each other every Wednesday at Rotary, but we don't always get to see each other's families, and the opportunity to be able to visit and have the kids be able to be there to see Santa Claus and stuff, it was, it was rewarding. And that's really what Christmas is about, spending time with people and doing for others that may not be able to reciprocate. And then, other than that, all I want to say is Happy New Year to the residents of Commerce City and the staff and all the employees, and this is going to be a great year with the 2K projects coming online, the water park's going to come online. This community has a lot to look forward to, and we need to keep our heads up and keep working towards the goal and not let ourselves get sidetracked with, with things that can easily sidetrack us. So, so, keep your heads up, and we're going to have a good year here at the city this year. I see Bob out there.
Yeah. I forgot one thing. Just for council's information, tomorrow, the attorneys involved with the DIA issues are meeting in preparation for our entire ACC meeting on Thursday, so keep you updated on that.
All right, thank you. Is there any, anyone have anything to add to my reports? Mr. Benson?
Just two things. At the last Dr. Cog meeting, I received my five-year clock.
Nice.
I got a clock that says five years.
Well, then, I expect you not to be late to any more council meetings. Hey, I can't pass that up when you're laying out. They cleaned this clock.
As long as I consistently attend. And also, I noticed in the City Manager's Report that, you know, based on Mr. Amador's suggestion that the flag football game is not recommended. And what I'm going to suggest is that we have a football, with the Chiefs okay, of course, a football game between our cops and the Brighton cops with full pads.
Oh, come on. You don't want to kill our cops?
Anyway, I just throw that out. I know there's no reason to play flag football. We're adults. Put on the helmets. That's just my suggestion, but the chief has to okay this.
All right, well, I could tell you, we have Mr. Amador, and we can sub in his brother because nobody will know the difference, and we ought to be able to take him. Don't you think?
All right. I think he and his brother both ought to be able to play there.
I'm going to say have the City Council instead.
All right, Bob, go ahead.
I would suggest the City Council instead of the Brighton cops. I would suggest that. Don't suggest that.
Bob, there's not enough of us for a team.
No, we got Bob and Brian. That's 11.
All right. I will remind us that we had a softball game against staff some years ago, and I think several council members were limping for a week or two after a softball game, so I'm not sure that that's the best idea.
My problem was I couldn't see the ball anymore, and in football, it doesn't make that much difference.
We could get a bright pink ball or something.
We can get an orange one for you, Jim. All right. If there be no further business to come before the City Council of Commerce City this evening, we are adjourned. we ought to be able to take him. Don't you think?
All right. I think he and his brother both ought to be able to play there.
I'm going to say have the City Council instead.
All right, Bob, go ahead.
I would suggest the City Council instead of the Brighton cops. I would suggest that. Don't suggest that.
No, Bob, there's not enough of us for a team.